To the February 2, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Board Meeting. We'll start with Agenda Item 1A, Roll Call. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Commissioner Bernard. Mayor Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks. Vice Mayor Weinroth. Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum with seven county commissioners present within the chambers. We'll start now, or we'll move now to 1B and C, your invocation and pledge of allegiance. If I can ask you to please join me in standing. "We ask you, God, to bless this meeting of people who earnestly desire to do their work in the best possible way to benefit those we serve and to leave our children a better world. Please give us the wisdom and vision to plan adequately and accordingly and act correctly to achieve these ends." On that. "The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Agenda Item Number 2A, Additions, Deletions, and Substitutions. Madam County Administrator, you're recognized for any additions, deletions, or substitutions to the agenda.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the board. There are no additions, deletions, or substitutions today.
Very good.
Move an option to the agenda.
Second.
Subject to Agenda Item 2B, Adoption. Vice Mayor Weinroth has moved the consent, or the agenda approval forward as published, seconded by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor? All opposed? That item passes 7-0, and the agenda is adopted. We'll move now to Agenda Item 3, the Consent Agenda, which starts and can be found on Page 5. Is there any member of the board that would like to pull an item from the Consent Agenda? Is there any public comment on the Consent Agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Move the Consent Agenda.
There is a motion made by Vice Mayor Weinroth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bernard. There's no public comment or further comment by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? The Consent Agenda passes 7-0. We move now to Special Presentations, Agenda Item Number 4, which can be found on Page 23 of the agenda. We'll start with 4A, a very important presentation regarding the Susan B. Anthony Award Presentation, made by Michelle Demone, National Organization of Women Board Director. You're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm taking off my 12th floor hat, and I am representing the National Organization for Women of Palm Beach County as a Board of Director, and I'm actually very proud of that because they're a unique organization, a pioneer of feminists, one that we read about when we were in school and aspired to be. So I'm happy to represent them, and they did a all-call to have folks come on live to watch today. So I just want to recognize Natalie, Sheila, Becca, Arlene, Christina, Gloria, Del, Jan, and Jennifer, because they are phenomenal women. And that being said, this organization honored me with the opportunity to present two phenomenal commissioners with the Susan B. Anthony Award. And if you're familiar with Susan B. Anthony, she was a pioneer with women's suffrage, and she fought for the right to vote, for women to vote, and she fought against antislavery, slavery, which I think is important to recognize since this is Black History Month. But she was a pioneer way before her time, and then we had women in the 60s and 70s being our champions. And so it's exciting for me to be here today to present the Susan B. Anthony Award for 2020 to Commissioner Melissa McKinley. And the women of now have truly self-quarantined, so this virtual opportunity was an incredible opportunity for them. And Commissioner McKinley, it's an interesting opportunity for me to present you with this award because, you know, I admire you as a single mom. I admire you as an FSU graduate, but, you know, I admire you for your leadership, your leadership with strong women and advocating for your daughters and other people's daughters, and your advocate for the Glades and Pahokee and South Bay and communities that not always are recognized for their assets and qualities and so forth. And then you've been a champion for the Junior League, and you've made that very clear in your path through the years. And you're the president of the Florida Association of Counties for the entire state of Florida, and that commissioner sits right here in this chamber. And she's also been a champion for children's and families. She's been a champion for helping people with addiction in the first addiction stabilization unit. But on a personal side, not only is she or has been my commissioner in District 6, who I think has served it very well, I'm very proud of you for doing it. You've been a friend, a mentor, and you're just a pioneer for women's rights, women's leaderships, and a one hell of a mom and one heck of a county commissioner. And I represent, or I present you with the Susan B. Anthony Award for 2020.
That's strange to be on this side of the microphone. To all the women that are watching today on behalf of the National Organization of Women, I want to say thank you for this recognition. It's not last on me that 2020 was the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage. It was also the first time in this country's history that we ever elected a woman as Vice President of the United States. And it's one of those moments where I wish my mom was here to watch, because she was my mentor. But I get to serve with a lot of very phenomenal women that paved the path for me. I want to thank Denise Niemann and Verdina Baker for being two of those women that, even though Todd hired me 11 years ago, I know Verdina had something to do with that decision. But there, you know, all the way back to, you know, being in college and working on women's issues in college and registering students to vote when I was a student at FSU, to living in New Orleans and working for two attorneys that were founders of the National Organization of Women way back when. But really, being raised by a single mother and who spent her college years, even though they were cut short because she found out she was pregnant with my brother, and my very Catholic grandfather said to my father, "You will do the right thing," and he said, "Yes, sir," and she got married and put her career on hold and quickly had three of us in 28 months. And then I think she realized what the issue was. 28 months. I had three and three and a half years. She had three in 28 months. I can't even imagine what it was like to be her. But she, she never wavered in her support to want to see her own daughter succeed. I can even remember when I told her I was getting married, she kind of looked at me and said, "Are you sure?" Because she knew I was putting a pause on my career efforts and my education as well to do that. So to all the women that have lifted me up to where I am today, including a lot of women who are watching this on camera right now, to the Michelle McGoverns of the world who helped me get here by giving me a chance, to the Michelle Demones of the world who made me sit down multiple times when I decided I wanted to run to serve on the county commission and really made me earn her support. In turn, I've really, she's earned my respect. But the next nominee or the next awardee has been somebody that I have looked up to since her time in the legislature, and I was just a Junior Leaguer knocking on her door advocating on behalf of foster care issues and girls in the juvenile justice system. Commissioner Sacks, it is quite an honor to share this moment with you and look forward to hearing your words. But thank you to the National Organization of Women for this recognition. Thank you to all the women that have paved the path. Thank you to Kamala Harris for her work in being elected the first female Vice President of the United States. And to this country, while we had the right, women had the right to vote, one, you know, earned it 100 years ago, that didn't include all women. And so I think that we need to recognize our work is not done and just keep doing the best that we can and make sure that we continue paving that path. Thank you.
Sorry. The world of COVID-19, right? So the next one's going to be a little bit harder for me. So Susan B. Anthony actually voted before she passed away, but she voted illegally. And when she voted illegally, she asked them, "Please handcuff me like a man." And so it is interesting, the personality, character, and the pioneer she was, which brings me to fierce and strength. And, you know, the next recipient, which is my boss, and I also consider her a friend and a mentor, is Commissioner Maria Sacks, which we still have a difficult time from going from Senator to Commissioner. But, you know, I met Commissioner Sacks years ago when I served with Indian Trail Improvement District, and she is definitely a person who you know when she's in the room, and she has a very strong presence and one that demands to be recognized in a respectful way. And we came together a few years ago, and I know a lot of people wonder how we became a team, but because I am a strong woman, and she is a very strong woman. And, but the thing that I admire most about Commissioner Sacks is she recognizes strong women, and she promotes strong women, and she embraces that and elevates that. And she's always my champion, and she's always encouraging me to do best. So that being said, let's go back and talk about Commissioner Sacks' path, because she's definitely one of the pioneers, along with those ladies that I serve on the National Organization of Women with. And she's a graduate of the University of Miami and with a law degree. And she is, she was a pioneer in her own right. She became a prosecutor and served underneath State Attorney Janet Reno. And she was down in Miami in the days when they were prosecuting drug dealers. And here's, you know, a female attorney in the 80s and 90s putting bad guys in jail. And then she comes along and she establishes a family, and she becomes a defense attorney, and she represents victims against violent crimes. And then she establishes herself, and she is the founder, the president of the Florida Association of Women Lawyers, and, or, excuse me, she is the president of the Florida Association of Women Lawyers and the founder of Women for Excellence. And she, if you know Commissioner, you know that she is the daughter of a World War II vet, and that is very important to her. Therefore, she serves our veterans here in Palm Beach County throughout the state admirably, and she makes sure they're never forgotten. And she, she is the daughter of a strong mother who is one of her biggest champions. She encouraged the commissioner to run for office, to serve, to be a strong mother. And unfortunately, Commissioner's mother passed away most recently, but I think she's worthy of being recognized because if you know the commissioner, you know her mother well, too, because she speaks of her every single day. And she, you all know this about the commissioner, she's a pioneer against human trafficking. And that is a devastating travesty to our country and our culture, but it's nice to know that we have champions to prevent that. And, but what you don't know about the commissioner is that she is also very much in tune with her feminine side. And if you are invited to her home, she will make you a homemade espresso. She loves her three children. She is a very attentive mother. She's a very attentive grandmother, and that is also, also to be admired. She is truly a family person. You've heard that in her speeches. You've heard that in her campaign material. But she is one heck of a woman. She is one to be admired. She's fierce. She's intelligent. She's strong. She's everything every woman should admire and aspire to be. And so on that note, I am going to recognize Commissioner Maria Sacks as the recipient of the Susan B. Anthony Award for 2021.
Michelle Demone, thank you so much. And for the leaders of the National Organization of Women, thank you. Because any woman who has ever achieved anything in her life, we know that it is because of the women who have given us that start, starting with our moms and going on after that, because maybe we've seen a little farther because of the shoulders that we've had, the opportunity to stand upon. And so it is to the women of the National Organization of Women and to every woman's organization today in this state and throughout the country. Thank you, because it is to you that we owe this debt of gratitude. You know, it reminds me of a story I heard the other day about a little girl walking in the streets of Oakland on the way to school. And she was, she was belittled by others because of her race, but she walked on because she was fearless. She walked on. She kept walking, and her fearlessness led her to the steps of the United States Capitol. And that's our new Vice President, Kamala Harris. So to every little girl, whether it's the streets of Detroit, or Brooklyn, or Oakland, or wherever, here in Florida, wherever you are, little girls, listen up, because you have broad shoulders upon which to stand to see the future of Florida. The future of this great state lies in our mothers, our grandmothers, our aunts, and our little girls, who will someday become governors, watch out, become governors, Congresswomen, and yes, President, because of the women who have shown us the way. Nobody gives you power. Nobody says to a little girl, "Come here, I'm going to give you a big position one day. You know, Ms. Baker, I'm going to make you administrator of one of the greatest counties in the state." You take it. You take it with fearlessness and respect for those who have come before you, and you work very, very hard, harder than anybody else. My dad would say, "I always vote for a woman, Maria." I'd say, "Why that? Why, Dad?" "Because I know women who always work harder than men." And I know of my fellow commissioner, Commissioner Marino, you've got a great future ahead of you here in our county commission. And Commissioner McKinley, I am so proud of you. I've watched you grow. When you came to me years ago, I didn't know where you came from, but I knew you were going someplace. And I wanted to help you. And now I watch you as you grow and develop into an amazing commissioner. And thank you so much for all you have done, and you've got a lot more to do ahead of you, Commissioner McKinley. So to all the little girls out there, thank you to the women of the National Organization of Women, to the women of Excellence, and to all the women who are here today. Look at your daughters and your granddaughters, because you're looking at future leaders of this county, this state, and our nation. And to all of them, thank you, and I look forward with optimism as we look into the future of our country. Thank you so much. And thank you, Michelle Demone. You've been a tremendous, you've been a tremendous friend. And you know, women who are friends, and this is one of the founding principles of the Women for Excellence, is that when you lose everything in your life, and it could be your job, it could be your husband, boyfriend, maybe both about the same time, who do you call? Do you call your girlfriends? Do you call your girlfriends? And Michelle Demone has become a mentor to many women, and I know to her daughter whom she loves very much. But she has also been a wonderful girlfriend to many of us, I know, to Commissioner McKinley and myself. And to you, Michelle Demone, I thank you, and I look forward to a great political future for you as well. Thank you, all of you. Thank you. God bless.
All right, I'll put my hat back on, go back up to the 12th floor and work.
Well, thank you, Michelle, and thank you on behalf of the National Organization of Women. Obviously, everything that was said today is very true about these two leaders, fearless women, but they're also a hell of a friend, too. So it's great to have that friendship and mentorship. And I always remember having to go down to Senator Sacks', and I tell this story a lot, going down to Senator Sacks' office when I was a new state rep. And, you know, the fear that you have when you knock on the senator's door, or you let the staff know you're there. And there was no reason to be fearful, whether it was a male or a female, a young person, a member or not. And I can say that about both of you. You have a way of instilling the knowledge and love and compassion that you both carry in your lives and makes this world a better place. We could really use that right now. Congratulations to the both of you.
Thank you.
Very good. We'll move now to 4B, Special Presentations related to COVID-19. I'll invite Darcy Davis, CEO of the Healthcare District of Palm Beach County, and Bill Johnson, our Emergency Manager for the county, and Dr. Alina Alonso of the Department of Health. And is there a preferred order that you folks would like to go in? We'll start with Dr. Alonso. Tradition prevails.
Okay, good morning. Thank you very much, Commissioner Kerner. To all the commissioners, how are you? Ms. Baker is speaking, so I'll say hi to her. Let's go ahead and get started with this. We'll start with the numbers. As you can see from our, can you all hear me okay? All right, it doesn't sound loud enough. We have 1 million more cases in the U.S. since our last board meeting, and we have 22,337 new deaths since our last meeting. The numbers have gone down a little bit from the increase that we had last time, and it looks like things are continuing to go down since our peak on the beginning of January, where we almost had 300,000 cases in one day. So that graph, hopefully, will keep going down. We're seeing all the states and this trend following the states and our other counties across the country with a little bit of hope here at the end of the tunnel. These are our numbers for Palm Beach County and for Florida. You can see that Florida has 5,730 cases. They had been running up in the 10,000s. So again, those have come down. 160 new hospitalizations and 206 deaths for Palm Beach County. Look at that number. We love it. Only 377 new cases. That has come down. We had a little spike of 1,000 a couple days ago, but the numbers have been averaging lower. We have 14 new hospitalizations and one new death. So here's our chart. Perhaps it's a little bit hard to read from far away, but you've got the copy of it in front of you. Our average for our total positivity is at 15.31. That has continued to go up every single day. We're at 15.55. Our average for our daily positivity, which is what tells us how much virus there is, is still above the 5, but it has averaged at 8.71. We're at 8.09 as of the last day that we have this number. We have an average of 10688 new cases per day. So again, we had this high number on, at the end of January, with the 1,126. And we're staying away from that 1,000, which we're very happy for. Our hospitalizations have remained steady. The hospital's doing a great job of maintaining, even though we have high numbers in terms of hospital utilization and ICU beds, that has gone, the number, the percentage has gone down a bit. It was all the way up to above a quarter at one point. It's at 21%. Again, it's very taxing on the nursing and the rest of the staff in the hospital, but the hospitals have done a great job and continue to be able to manage that with their staff. So our governor's executive order has not changed. I keep putting this up because people keep wanting us to see patients with comorbidities. The only place that that can be done is through the hospital. So please remind everyone and everyone listening that at this point, the only people we can vaccinate, which it says shall only vaccinate, is persons of 65 years of age and older and healthcare personnel with direct patient contact. That's not our choice. That is the executive order, and it's very clear, and the governor has made that point several times when he's spoken. So please continue to follow that. Okay, where are we? What everybody wants to know is, you know, when are we going to have enough vaccine? When are we going to be able to get rolling here? We're still in Phase 1, folks. We still have limited vaccine coming in. That is understandable. It's going to take still a little bit longer for us to get into Phase 2, where there's moderate vaccine availability. So we're right here at the cusp between Phase 1 and 2. We still have a little bit more to go before that vaccine starts rolling. So what are we doing about that? So the items in red are the things that need to happen to be able to move into Phase 2. So the one thing that has gotten a lot of conversation lately is the shareware, the statewide centralized web-based system that's going to allow people to call it, get on a waitlist, and then get appointments based on the vaccine allocations to the different centers and different county health departments. The public can get on that waiting list, but there's not enough appointments for all the counties. And some of us, like in Palm Beach County, we still, we can see it, but we can't look at the list to see who's on it. And we still have people that are waiting to get the vaccine from the first group of our waiting list, and we promised those people that they would be taken in order. So therefore, we're not going to take people from this waiting list until the other waiting list is completed. And that's what the Healthcare District is here, and they have been going through that list. And Darcy can talk to you about that they're going through it as quickly as they can based on the available vaccine. So for that reason, I thought that if people started getting on that waiting list, we were going to have the same problem that we had with our original waiting list. So basically, the state did exactly what we had done in the beginning, is to utilize a waiting list. When they're on that waiting list, the first thing that people do is they start calling all of you and us to see where they are on the waiting list, because they don't hear back. So we have suggested that the state do the same thing that we did, is to send them an email, at least in recognition that it's, that they have received the email. I'm sorry, I forgot to turn it off. And that they do regular communication with those folks that are on the waiting list, and they have taken up that suggestion. So we will be ready to start utilizing that list as soon as we finish with our original list. I think that's fair to everybody that went on the original list. Now, the one thing about this system is that if you jump around, what people have done is they've gone, they've called, they get on the Miami waiting list, they get on the Broward waiting list, they get on our waiting list, they get on Martin County, Indian River, they just jump around, all around, to see who will give them the first appointment. You probably would do the same thing, right? Well, this system is going to knock you off and leave you with the last place that you sign up for. So if you signed up for Miami two months ago, and now you jump on that list and you sign up again for West Palm Beach or Palm Beach County, you're going to get knocked off of the Miami site, and you're going to get an appointment for your, whatever order you're in. you're in the last time you sign up. So do not do that. Do not recommend that to people who call you. Does everybody understand that? Do I need to explain that better? So it's an automated system, and it's going to take your last entry as the place where you want to get your vaccine. Some portions are still in design, and we still do not have access. We wanted to see the list to be able to eliminate people that may already have gotten the vaccine, or to see how that list looks with our list that we have. And we do not have access to that. That's probably one of the last priorities they have, because they're doing all kinds of changes to it, and they have a lot of other work, so we're way low on the priority list to be able to get that list for us. The good thing is that, well, the other thing that I want to make sure that everybody understands is that in Palm Beach County, we will have three systems. We will have this state system for us, with the county health departments. All the state health departments are going to be on this statewide system. The healthcare district has their own system, because they have a hospital, and these systems basically tie into our medical record. So all the county health departments in Florida are one entity, and we all have a shared medical record. So all the county health departments can be on there, and those clients will be our patients when we see them. But we can't share medical records, right? That's not possible. So for that reason, Miami, Broward, and the healthcare district will have their own system to put those patients into their medical records when they get appointments. And then Publix is out on its own also, because Publix has its own appointment system. So the idea was, the state was hoping that everybody would get on one system, so it'd be one statewide system for Florida. That cannot happen, because the medical records can't be shared. We're ready with the mass vaccination centers. We're ready with the ability to do pods, mobile units, strike teams, but before we do that, we obviously need to increase and have consistent supply of vaccine before we can do that. So right now, what we are doing, both the healthcare district and the health department, is that we're basically making our appointments one week ahead of time to make sure that we have the vaccine as it comes in each week. So we get notice of what's going to come in, and then we make those appointments. And that is the recommendation at the state level for these appointments to be done one week at a time, and not, you know, give a lot of appointments out into the future for that reason. So we saw, we saw more vaccine come in, so what's in green is what is actually very positive, that we saw 90,000 vaccines allocated between the healthcare district and the county health department this week, instead of having to cancel appointments. So we persisted in perhaps continuing to say, we need vaccine, we need vaccine, and we did get some of that allotment sent to us, so we're very happy about that. And that means we will be able to do appointments beyond February 5th, which is when I told you that we would have to stop doing first appointments. The other thing is that the second doses have been coming very promptly, and we want to remind people to please get their second dose where they got their first dose, for the simple reason that that's who it's being allocated to. So those second doses have been coming in, again, weekly, and being given to the people that have the doses. So if you went to Okeechobee County, please go back to Okeechobee County, they're the ones that have your vaccine. So the state has also led some organized allocations to South Florida, including Palm Beach County, and we have several events that are being planned in the very near future that have state-allocated vaccine for Palm Beach County. So we're looking forward to that planning and to that activity being done here in Palm Beach County. So we're ready. Once we start having that flow of the vaccine, we'll be able to jump into Phase 2, when we can then collaborate with our partners to increase the vaccination. And as more becomes available, we can include preparation for large-scale community pods and vaccinate any other priority group that the governor decides to add to the group. And by the time we get to the late spring, summer, we'll be also able to vaccinate the general population. I think that's a question that I get at least 15 or 20 times a day. When is the general population going to be vaccinated? So the suggestion is that it will be sometime in the summer, by the time we get to enough vaccine to be able to do that. So we need to keep those expectations realistic and, you know, continue to realize that it's a matter of supply and demand, and that everybody's doing the best they can to get to that supply and get to those folks that need to get vaccinated. Our numbers look very good for Palm Beach County. I think last time I told you that we were at 8%. We are now at 10.7%. We have vaccinated 160,905 individuals. We're ahead of Broward by a significant amount, but we're ahead of the state and Dade County in terms of the percent of our population that has been vaccinated. And these numbers remain similar, with the white population going up another percent. Last time it was 70%, and these all remain the same. Females have also been beating the males a little bit there. We went up to 62%. So more females are getting the vaccine than the males. And that's by the population. That's not because there's more women than men, right? That's according to the percent of the population. And again, we also look at the fact that it's out of these people that have been vaccinated. So we've seen quite a few folks, and we've been able to put shots in arms, I think, very efficiently here in Palm Beach County. And the message continues that we could do a lot more, because we're ready, we have everything in place, we have our center in place, we have the mobile units, and we have all our partners ready to do more, but we have to get that vaccine, and it's just a matter of supply and demand. So in the meantime, why is it important that we continue to wear a mask, wash our hands, and watch our distance? That's very important for the reason that the vaccine, while it's very effective, it will stop you from going to the hospital, it will stop you from dying, but it is possible that you could still get the virus. And we don't know how long the immunity for the vaccine lasts. We will not know that until millions of people are studied across the world to see how long that immunity lasts. It could last a year, it could last two years. We don't know until that is studied and the data is collected by millions of people. So in the meantime, we know we have mutated viruses, and it's so important now more than ever to get everyone vaccinated that wants to be vaccinated, because that will stop the spread, but also our masks will stop the spread. If the virus doesn't go from person to person, and it doesn't spread, then it can't mutate. So the more that we use our masks, continue to wash our hands and watch our distance, the more chances we have of stopping the spread, and that's still important, even if the vaccine is out there, because we don't want this vaccine to continue to mutate. And that's one of the ways that we can stop that from occurring, so that there's not more mutations. So please, keep that in mind. It doesn't mean that you have your two shots and you can go commando and take everything off, okay? We still got to watch for one another and take care of one another. And of course, these are the most important places to avoid. The three Cs, the crowded places, close-contact settings, and confined indoor spaces, especially with poor ventilation. It is very, very important with the new virus. It is much more contagious, and it has spread to very large groups with simply a short dining experience, where everybody who was there ended up being positive. So we're looking for that, and we want to make sure everybody stays safe, don't get noncompliant here towards the end. We've done a great job, we've got to keep it up. Wear your masks, wash your hands, watch your distance. Okay, thank you.
Very good, doctor. We're going to take questions, if that's all right, with the members of the board at the end of all three speakers. I do have the order right now is Commissioner Weiss, Vice Mayor Weinroth, Commissioner Moreno, and McKinley, and we'll go from there.
Good morning.
Darcy, or Ms. Davis you recognized.
Good morning. Darcy Davis, CEO of the Healthcare District. And I just wanted to introduce a little bit about what the Healthcare District is, because I think there's often confusion about the Health Department and the Healthcare District. So the Healthcare District has actually been around since 1988, when the voters voted in the Healthcare District. And we are an independent special taxing district, whose purpose is to be that healthcare --
Ms. Davis, can you just move a little closer to --
Of course, sorry. Whose purpose is to be the healthcare safety net for Palm Beach County. The way that we do that is that, you know, pre-COVID and now, we actually operate a 70-bed acute care hospital in Belle Glade, known as Lakeside Medical Center. We have 120-bed skilled nursing facility in Riviera Beach. We employ approximately 200 school nurses who are deployed throughout the county and public schools. We operate the air ambulance service in partnership with Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. We serve as the trauma agency for the region. We operate 10 federally qualified health centers who provide medical, dental, pharmacy, behavioral health services for adults and children, and that's the arm through which we do our mobile unit homeless outreach. And then we also have a specialty network for those patients, once they get their primary care, if they need to go to the specialist. But, you know, that's who we were before COVID, that's who we are now, but additionally, since COVID, we've continued to do all of that, but we also began testing operations March 16th at multiple locations throughout the county, including that largest drive-through site at Fit Team Ballpark. We've done 145,000 tests ongoing. Our school nurses are back in the schools since November, oh, sorry, September 21st, with vastly new job responsibilities. They are doing screening and testing, and to date, they've screened approximately 29,000 students. And then, starting December 23rd, we received and administered the first doses of vaccine. I think it's important to note, as Dr. Alonso mentioned, that we're delivering this vaccine under the physician practice arm of our federally qualified health centers. That's medical oversight, medical records, and we're still required to follow the regulations for such licensure. And even as we're ramping up and building out our schedules, templates, we've hired an additional 80 staff, we were administering the vaccine, because we wanted to get it out and get it in people's arms and not leave it sitting on the shelves, as we were building our infrastructure. So we started by deploying mobile units in the community for daily missions. We did that beginning on January 7th, and we did that for approximately seven days, and we administered 6,500 vaccines that way. Starting in January 19th, we partnered with the county and opened up the fixed sites at the South County Civic Center, and then the John Prince Park location, utilizing our mobile unit Warrior. We have been able to do approximately 1,500 vaccinations per site per day. I bring that up, because I think it's important to note that, you know, in Boston, Fenway Park is opening, and they're hoping to achieve a goal of 1,000 a day. So we have a very efficient process, and we're able to get that vaccine out, I think, very effectively. But I do want to bring up something about John Prince Park. I think you all have heard about the vaccine spoilage, and I wanted to hit that head-on, because I think it's important for me to provide you with some assurance and clarity around that situation. It was a single, isolated incident, it was a human error, and it had absolutely no impact on patient safety. The first night at John Prince Park, the generator on the mobile unit was not turned on. The next morning, the pharmacist discovered that the vaccine that was on that mobile unit had increased above the manufacturer-recommended temperature. So they immediately reported this. We reached out to the manufacturer and confirmed that it was not viable, and it was taken from the site. New vaccine was brought in immediately, so that we could continue to honor the appointments that were there on, that morning, on that day, actually. This incident, it was reported to all the regulatory authorities, and internal review was done. We have put in additional safeguards and multiple layers of quality assurance, and we're confident that this will not happen again. To date, we've administered approximately 25,000 total vaccines across the county of both Moderna and Pfizer. 24,000 of those have been first doses, with another 6,000 first doses scheduled this week, and we're now getting into that cycle of second doses on top of those first doses. We are continuing to work off the Department of Health waiting list. We received approximately 136,000 email addresses from the Health Department. We set the appointment request link to those individuals, and we compare those requests to the waiting list, so that we are pushing those people first, so that we can get through that list. We've seen only about a 40% response rate, meaning that only about 60,000 of those 136,000 actually followed up and requested an appointment. And so we anticipate with that balance that we'll see another four to six weeks of continuing to honor the list at this current rate of vaccine supply. I will just say in closing that we're very confident in the integrity of our system, and that we know that as the supply increases, we can safely and effectively get this vaccine out to the community very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Johnson, you're up.
Dr. Alonso.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth and commissioners. Good morning. Happy Groundhog's Day. Phil did see his shadow, so unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess, we'll be seeing another six weeks of winter. On this 323rd day of EOC activation, I'm presenting you again my weekly update of the COVID-19 phased restart CPR program, and you can follow along. I've given you a copy, a paper copy in front of you. Quickly, as you can see on the matrix, we did not meet two of the indicators on the matrix this week. Last week, we failed to meet five of the indicators. Our overall positivity rate, as Dr. Alonso pointed out, is currently at 15.51%. The red line in the lower-left graph indicates a running seven-day average, representing an overall increasing trend. The upper-right-hand graph shows that the overall positivity rate has been steadily increasing since its low of 12.14% on October 25th. As seen in the next slide on COVID daily lab positivity, as seen in the upper-right-hand graph, our daily lab positivity rate has been rising steadily since mid-October. The lower-left-hand graph shows that during the last two weeks, our daily lab positivity rate has averaged about 8.145%, so 8.45%, which is above the targeted 5%. The red line in this graph indicates a running seven-day average. You will note the slight dip at the right end of the regression line. Next slide is COVID-positive total hospital census, and as the chart in the lower-left shows, over the last week, we saw fewer patients hospitalized with COVID-19. We are seeing 7.7% of our total hospital beds countywide being used for COVID-19 patients. We had 8.7% last week. Note that local hospitals are running an average occupancy rate of about 75% this week, which is a bit lower than last week. The chart in the upper-right-hand corner shows the historical trend of COVID hospitalizations in Palm Beach County, and again, note the dip at the very right end of the graph. The next slide talks, demonstrates COVID-19 deaths. In terms of mortality, the graph in the upper-right-hand corner shows that our COVID-19-related deaths continue a slow decline. We have seen our death grade, and I'm sorry, in our last report, the 14-day average daily deaths jumped from 1.9 deaths per day to 3.4 deaths per day, but this week, the daily death rate dropped to 1.4 deaths per day, a number that we haven't seen since December 14th of last year. In terms of COVID-19 positive ICU cases, over the last week, we saw fewer COVID-19 patients in our ICU units countywide. The graph in the left corner shows this week's downward trend. The small graph in the lower right was last week's trend. So as you can see, this week's decrease is steeper, and we're headed in the right direction. On average, about 22% of all ICU beds countywide are currently occupied by COVID patients, which is down from 25% last week, and which is about 93 patients per day countywide. Recall that we were treating an average of 149 patients per day -- Recall that we were treating an average of 149 patients per day in our ICUs in July of 2020. Our countywide ventilator utilization rate has remained stable at about 47%, and I continue to hold weekly calls with our hospitals. Daily med alerts, again, we can see by the chart in the lower-left corner that med alerts have an average decreased slightly in this past week. The average decreased to about 17 patients per day. Recall that July's average was 24 per day, as shown in the chart in the upper-right, and our mode was 37. The next slide, ED, emergency department visits with COVID-like illnesses. We've seen that in mid-July, ED visits with CLI peaked around 1,090 cases per week. The week of January 9th, we saw a recent peak of 876, and this week, we're down to 661. In terms of access to various types of testing, we continue to see the stable testing program. We have nearly 700,000 people in Palm Beach County have been testing, have been tested, I'm sorry, representing over 46% of our total population. Residents continue to have access to at least 120 sites. In closing, my previous presentation of the matrix showed five red areas, and this week, as I mentioned, we see only two. And the trends that we continue to see are that our overall positivity rate continues to climb, and our ED visits with CLI have increased this week. However, there are some glimmers of hope, that this resurgence may have piqued. Our daily lab positivity rates have decreased three weeks in a row. Our hospitalization and ICU rates are decreasing, and our death rates, our death rate and med alerts have decreased. And another sign of hope is that we have vaccinated, as Dr. Alonso pointed out, over 161,000 people in Palm Beach County. And as I've said before, this is in spite of a very limited supply of vaccine and a late start. Again, I would point out that we were not one of the Pfizer five counties, yet we have been number two in the state for shots in the arm, getting closer to the number-one Miami-Dade County every day. We have vaccinated nearly 129,000 seniors. Almost two of every five of our higher-risk seniors is vaccinated. Consider this, that 80% of all of our vaccines have gotten into the arms of seniors. We continue to have twice-daily multi-agency leadership calls. We continue to have daily calls with the state EOC, and we are unified in our mission, which is to get as many shots in arms as quickly as the supply of vaccine allows us. We have the infrastructure to achieve that mission today. We have fixed and mobile sites, we have pods, strike teams, as Dr. Alonso alluded to, and Darcy Davis. We have the capacity to vaccinate about 50 to 75,000 vaccines a week, or vaccinations a week. And this week alone, we anticipate another 32,000 vaccinations will be going into arms in Palm Beach County alone. I want to assure you again that the Division of Emergency Management, the EOC, and the county are working very closely with Dr. Alonso and her entire Department of Health team as they roll out the vaccine into our community. As Dr. Alonso pointed out, it continues to be a supply and demand issue. We are receiving limited supply, so again, patience is essential. We have the capability to administer a lot more vaccine, and we are seeing signs of hope. As I demonstrated in some of my slides earlier, we're seeing a bit more vaccine, and we are seeing fewer cases of COVID. That ends my report. Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Johnson. For an awesome report, and an awesome level of service to this county. We'll get to that in just a moment. I'd like to start with the questions for members of the board. We'll start with Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. A few questions, you know, in this, to start off with, we've been hearing a lot of questions from people regarding the waiting list and how that's being handled. And so, hopefully, you can, we can shed some more light, so, but we can understand, and also, the public can understand. So, are people being vaccinated in the order in which they sign up? And if they're not, what determines that order?
The lists that we handed over to the Healthcare District had dates. And so, they're working through that list by the dates. So, that's as close as we can get to, you know, in the order that they signed up to that waiting list. Obviously, if the email is sent to them and they are delayed, or they don't respond right away, then they, somebody else, it's possible that somebody else goes ahead of them that responds quicker, right? But, mostly by far, it's going in the order that they signed up.
Is, does the email go out daily? Does it go out weekly? And if so, which day of the week does it go out to invite people to sign up?
I'll let Darcy answer, since she's here.
So, that has differed. It depends upon the vaccine supply and how many appointments we've opened up to be able to get those appointments filled. So, as we know, for example, this week, we know that we have approximately 6,000 appointments to fill. We started on Friday, sending out the, we call them health campaigns. The health campaign goes out to the individual. We took a chunk of like 20,000 people to try to get 6,000 slots filled. Those, the individuals will go in and schedule themselves with a time based upon what was opened, and then, we continue to communicate with them through that process until their appointment comes with consent items, questionnaire, medical questionnaire, et cetera. So, I mean, we're doing it as we know there's vaccine, as the appointments are open.
So, does your, does your email provider, does that, does that tell you? Do you get a report back? How many people open their emails, and how many of them get, go into spam?
Yes, absolutely, we do. We get, you know, clicked, error, opened, self-scheduled, sent, you know, or erred out. So, yes.
So, how many of them are ending up in spam? Do you know, what percentage?
Very, 154 of 136,000 were, appear to be the wrong address. So, we, they, we either got a bad email address or went to spam.
You know, the, going into the spam filters, some of the more sophisticated email systems will know if they're getting filtered out by the spam filters on the other end?
Yeah.
You don't have that?
I don't.
Okay.
It just says error.
All right, because we are reminding people to check their spam, because we suspect a lot of them are ending up that way. We've heard anecdotes, you know, and this helps explain why people are getting vaccinated before other people who have signed up, so that the emails are going out, they're not responding, and somebody further down the list is getting emailed and then, and is responding, so. How about people going across the borders, crossing, going out of county for their vaccines? Do we have any sense of what percent of people being vaccinated are doing that outside of Palm Beach County?
No, we only get the report for how many people from Palm Beach County are vaccinated.
So, we have no clarity?
I can't tell you how many people have gone out. I mean, I think we can take our amount of vaccine that we've done versus what's left over, right? But, that only counts our vaccinations. It doesn't count the hospital, it doesn't count the nursing homes and so forth. So, that total is the only thing that we have. We don't have it by where they got vaccinated.
Okay. And you were, last time you were here, you were talking about trying to get information regarding the geographical breakdown of where people are getting vaccinated. Have any, anything been done in that regard to have a better understanding?
I'm still waiting. Apparently, after it came out in Miami, all 67 counties wanted it. I have suggested that they put it on the dashboard. I'm still asking for it. I haven't gotten it.
Okay. And then, as it relates to, do we know in, and I assume these numbers, when you, on this chart here, these are, these are the numbers for Palm Beach County by race and gender, or is that statewide?
No, that's our Palm Beach County numbers.
Okay.
Did I give you the right one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I hope so.
Yes, that's for Palm Beach County. And it, again, remember that in South Florida, we have a very wide and varied population, and a lot of our population does not identify with the classifications that the CDC has written for them, right? So, we always are going to get a lot of unknown and others.
Okay. And then, I noticed here on, when we're talking about a number of people vaccinated in Palm Beach County, so, first dose is 140,000, so, and then, we've got 20,000 second doses for a total of 160,000. So, at most, so, we're really at, we've got 20,000, almost 21,000 that are totally vaccinated. We've got 140 on their, that are in process. So, when they get their second dose, then we'll end up with, I assume, 140,000. So, it, not quite the 160, but, because we're mixing those numbers up. You talked about the Miami and signing up online on the Miami, or choosing counties, and that you end up on the last one you signed up. That's only on the statewide system, correct? So, if they've signed up at Hard Rock and got, and they're, they're signing up at Hard Rock, that has nothing to do with that statewide list, correct?
Correct. If Hard Rock's not using that system-
Okay, so-
I don't know which system Hard Rock is using.
Okay, so, but they're, they don't have to worry. If they've signed up on Hard Rock, and they've got, they're in process there, they're, they don't need to worry about this thing with where you sign up last, with this-
Do you know if Hard Rock's on the-
I have no idea. All I know is-
It's very possible that Hard Rock is on Share Care.
Well, it seems like we need to try and find out what's happening, and so, people know what, if they're going to do this, what they're doing. In linking the databases together, when you, when we, when you link these databases, you don't link them?
We're not, no.
We cannot link the databases. The databases go directly to our medical record, and we cannot cross medical records.
So, the reservation is considered a medical record?
Yes. These are patients that we're administering a vaccine to. It's a procedure, and it's a medication that we're giving to them.
All right.
I wonder if this is different than the testing?
Yeah. You've got, are the second doses, you said the second doses are coming promptly. When we look at the total numbers, you know, when you say 9,000, I think on the sheet today, it said there were 9,000 last week. Does that include second doses, or is that 9,000 first doses?
First doses.
So, we did 9,000 first doses last week through your combined efforts-
Correct.
Plus whatever Publix did?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess the hospitals. I also, I read an article, it said the governor was sending 28,000 doses to hospitals to be used for at-risk patients. And I think in the article, it mentioned, I think Jupiter Medical Center was going to be the hospital to receive them in Palm Beach County. If we were to get, we represent roughly 5% of the state. If we were to get 5% of the vaccines, that would be about 1,400 people. How are people supposed to, those at-risk people supposed to get in line for those?
My understanding is that it has to be done by a physician in the hospital.
So, they gotta be, they have to be a patient of Jupiter to get?
Yes, now, I don't know. I have not had an opportunity to talk with Jupiter and see if they're going to open it up to other physicians, bringing patients to Jupiter. But originally, the executive order was for the hospital patients to be able to administer vaccine. Now, I do know that people that are on infusions with cancer and so forth have been able to go to the hospital, the offices in the hospital who are doing this, and gotten vaccinated. But, I don't know how each hospital's handling their patients. The patients that you see, that's why you see underage, like, younger people who have gotten vaccinated, because those people were in the hospital being treated for whatever-
But, this is really, I mean, this is, this is going to send people that are severely compromised and give them a false sense of hope that they're going to be able to get vaccinated, if this is the way the process is going to, is going to work for now. I don't understand this. This is-
That's been the same since the beginning. That was the only entity that had the discretion-
I know, I understand that, but if they're not related to the hospital, they can't get the vaccine. And so, I mean, we have a lot of people that contact our offices that are very severely ill, they're not 65, so they don't qualify. And now, we're telling them that their dose is coming, but they're not going to qualify for those either.
Well, let, let us talk to Jupiter, and let us talk to the hospitals and see how they're doing it. I do know that some people have been able to get the vaccine that way.
I, I'm sure people have, but this was put out, it was like, this was a big thing the governor was doing to, you know, address the situation, but it doesn't sound like it's really going to address the situation. That's all my questions I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. We'll move now to Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Weinroth, and then to Commissioner Marino.
Thank you, Mayor. And, as always, thank you very much for coming today, and we certainly do appreciate you taking time out of your busy days to give us this update. And, Ms. Davis, thank you for updating us on the unfortunate situation with the vaccine. Of course, we were hearing about that in our emails, wondering what was going on. I know Commissioner Weiss has spent a lot of time on the virtual waiting room, but I know, this is really an issue that is, if I had to take my emails and weigh them, you know, 90% of them are on this equity issue, and people feeling that they would be willing to wait if they knew they were, there was a fairness to the waiting. So, I'm going to ask you to help me a little bit, just to clarify, because I know we have different pockets of people. We have the pocket of people that originally had mailed, or had called or emailed the Department of Health, and that's one pocket. We have a second pocket of people that are going to Publix on a, I guess, every other day, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 6:00 a.m., and trying to get onto their list. Those two lists are not merged, there is nothing, so, if someone's on the Department of Health list, that's being used by the Healthcare District for their working down the number, I think you said was about 136,000 people. You're working that down, but the Publix list is completely separate.
Correct.
Now, we have a third pocket, which is this state list that people can be putting their name into. It's not that it's being thrown away-
Correct.
But, that you're not even looking at that list yet, until you've worked down the list that the Department of Health had accumulated. Is that all pretty accurate?
That's correct, except for the thought at the very end that we would work on their list later. We would have our own list, because there are people that are making appointment requests on our link that are just being put aside as we work through the Health Department list. So, as we go forward, there's going to have to be a reckoning, so to speak, of the list that she's got over there, and the folks that are sitting in a virtual waiting room for us. I suspect it's a lot of the exact same people. That's what we found when we took those emails, that, you know, some of these people, they're, you know, they're requesting every single day. So, even though this number is 136,000, as I mentioned, only 60,000 people actually from that list truly requested an appointment.
Okay, and we need to have people who have sent to that list check their spam folders, because there's a potential that there's an email acknowledging their original email to the Department of Health, and they are qualified to contact you for an appointment.
Exactly, and we would see them in that reconciliation before we send out a schedule- appointment, you know, for them to self-schedule. We check to make sure that we're going in order by date, reconciling that email address to make sure that we're getting people from the Health Department.
And then, at some point in time, you will then open up and start looking at that third pile of names and start contacting those people?
Correct. I think that we're about four to six weeks away at this rate.
But, it's not like it's going into a black hole. Those names are there-
They're still sitting out there, yes, sir.
And you will acknowledge them at some point.
Yes, we are converting all of those into a medical record. So, they all go from an appointment request to a medical record, so they're there. We just haven't opened up the schedule for them. We just haven't opened up the schedule for them yet.
At our last meeting, Ms. Davis, and you weren't here for that, and when we had some real concerns about those pockets of people that are not able to get access to these lists, because either they're not internet savvy or just can't get on. And we were concerned that there are pockets of individuals that are homebound. Can you let us know, and I know that you have the mobile units, you're using one up in the park right now as your, your, for vaccinations at the...
It's, it's not there anymore. So, the John Prince Park is where we had Warrior. It's not there right now. We're just at the South County Civic Center with hopes of also opening fairgrounds and a North County site. So, those would be the fixed facilities. The mobile units would be deployed later, but at this point, we're not utilizing them except for testing. To answer your original question about how do we make sure those folks, well, for one, they've got some of their, their, what do you call those? The, the groups, what are they called? Your teams that go out into the community? Huh? Yeah. Well, her strike teams and her, her groups that are going out into the community, I think is...
The healthcare workers?
Your homebound folks. How you get the homebound folks?
We have not, to my knowledge, Fire Rescue has not gotten any requests from the homebound. County Administrator, I don't, I don't think we're doing those right now.
We're not. At this point, we're working with Fire Rescue. We're also, and the chief is working with the other fire chiefs. Just as we did the homebound for testing, we're setting up that system as well for the homebound. So, that is something we're working on. I do know the state has been discussing an initiative on homebound, specifically the Holocaust homebound. But, we're, we're attempting to, to address all of those. Again, it's just supply.
Can we clarify? There was a news report that Commissioner McKinley was able to have some of the vaccine that was supposed to be sent to Publix diverted, and it was going to be used for other purposes, people who were not getting access to Publix. How is that being dispensed?
I have to look to you. There are several state organized activities that are going to be going on throughout South Florida. That will be announced when the governor's ready to announce them.
All right. Let me, let me ask you...
Excuse me, Commissioner, that's incorrect. The, those doses that are going to be, are being allocated to, amongst the Department of Health and the Healthcare District this week, and will be disseminated amongst those, the various sites that we have, that we're currently doing vaccinations. So, we are going to use those, those doses to go off the list.
But, there's no concerted effort, again, to the issues that we had at our last meeting about getting out west and, and addressing the underserved population, either in the west or in the urban areas where people are not having access to these online reservation systems?
There are several state-sponsored events that are going to take place to address those.
Right. In concert with our efforts.
What he's saying is that some of that vaccine that we got had to do with them redirecting from other places, we assume, from Publix, but I don't know if they actually said it was from Publix.
I'll defer on that.
But, we did get vaccine that we didn't think we were going to get. So, we're very happy with the 4,000, the 5,000 that Healthcare District got.
Okay.
But, in addition to do, to address your issue of the, some of the underserved areas, those, those events are going to be taking place.
One of the pockets of our population that's been very concerned about their health is our teachers, especially the 65 and over. Are we making any effort to address that population, especially since they just started a new semester, and we're trying to get as many kids back into school as possible?
The last conversation I had with the school board is they were going to do a survey to see how many people have not gotten their vaccine among that group, and how many want the vaccine. But, we haven't made any decision to do any specific special groups for any one particular county group.
Can I just interread for one second, Vice Mayor? On this point, and I'm sure that a lot of us on the board were contacted by at least one member of the board, the school board, that is, regarding this request. And I did speak with the Director of Emergency Management, because this, this is a policy decision at the end of the day. And there is a lot of value, I think, from my personal perspective, in ensuring that the 65-plus age population that works in the school district and works with our students have some special access to this. Now, that's just my personal opinion. When I spoke with Director Moskowitz, he said it can be accommodated, and, and the Department of Health could set up a pod with, with our assistance in doing that. But ultimately, I think the, the answer needs to come as a policy decision from this board if we want to ask the Department of Health to make that exception or, or provide that assistance that's been requested. That's not something that I can do on my own, nor would I be willing to attempt that. And I don't think it's an issue that should be deferred to the Executive Policy Group. I think if this is something the board wants to work on, then it needs to come from a majority of this board.
Thank you, Mayor. At the appropriate time, then, I'm going to make such a suggestion. I think that we can't lose sight of the fact that we have a, a population of students that has been severely impacted since last March. And obviously, their educational experience has been dramatically impacted. And the fact that we're not giving standardized tests right now is, is because we recognize that there's deficiency in their instruction, and we need to get them back on track as quick as possible. Can you tell us when this is over, so to speak? I, you know, you mentioned Groundhog Day today. I feel like this is Groundhog Day, but, like Bill Murray, hopefully, we'll wake up from this and, and move on. When we're at a point where a lot of our population is vaccinated, how are we going to identify those of us who are vaccinated so that we're able to, you know, use public transportation with, or get on a, a flight? Is there going to be, if from your experience or your knowledge, a unified database that's going to be used so that we're able to represent that we're vaccinated?
I have not heard of any such database. When it becomes safe for the general population is when we have herd immunity. The number has been thrown out of 70% of the population being vaccinated at the time when we can then assume that there's herd immunity. But, I think it's going to be some time, if you look at what's happened in Asian countries that had the SARS, it really lasted for quite some time, way beyond after they got vaccinated with the flu. So, it's possible that there may be some kind of, I mean, everyone would, would know whether or not they got vaccinated. But, as far as, I think that what will be utilized is the amount of positivity that is still in different areas, which is what was used for, you know, stopping people from travel from place to place. So, once we see that going down, then probably all those restrictions will be lifted, and people will be able to travel normally and so forth. But, I think that there will be, remember that not every country in the world has even gotten access to the vaccine. There are many countries that have very, very high positivity that have gotten zero. So, I think it's going to take some time before we can travel freely anywhere we want to go. But, I think that what will be utilized, instead of a database of who's gotten vaccinated, it's going to be the positivity rate, or the daily positivity rate to look at.
And, and again, I just want to stress that equity is really what I think everybody is looking for in this. I think everybody recognizes that there is not enough vaccine for everybody to get on today, but that if we feel that, you know, we're all in the line and people aren't cutting ahead of us, that we're more tolerant of, of this wait. So, again, thank you very much for what you're doing, and I appreciate your answers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. We're going to now move to Commissioner Moreno, and then to Commissioner McKinley.
Good morning, all. Thank you again. It's always interesting hearing your numbers, and I wanted to talk about the numbers. But, first, you know, we talk a lot about what, what we read in the paper. So, one of the things I read in the paper today was the fact that workers in healthcare facilities are choosing to not get vaccinated. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
You want me to? I mean, I can tell you about healthcare districts in particular. So, we have had about a 35 to 40% interest in getting the vaccine. I think the particular reason that I'm hearing surfacing, again anecdotal, is that the younger individuals that are of childbearing years don't necessarily want to take the risk. They don't feel like there's been enough time, perhaps, with the vaccine. We are definitely seeing our older employees taking advantage of the vaccine, the ones on the front lines that have seen it and see the impact of COVID, you know, day to day, are more compelled to take it. That's our experience.
Thank you. So, when you talk about your lists, and you talk about people putting their names on multiple lists, so if someone has received a vaccination appointment, and that, the letter has been generated, and they actually have maybe gotten the vaccine somewhere else, and they are a no-show, how do you fill that spot?
We're, we're doing it, we're calling everybody 48, we start, we were calling people 24 hours before their appointment, day before, to assure that they were coming in. And we were getting a lot of cancellations. They were not calling us with the cancellation that we actually were calling them. And so, we then filled with people that we had on the waiting list, those spots. We were very successful in doing that. But, since we're seeing about 30 to 40 people canceling or not showing up...
Wow.
We are then calling 48 hours in advance in order to make sure that we have enough time to put people in. So, so far, we've been doing pretty good of being able to fill in those spots by, by using that way of calling folks. I think people should try to call us to say that they have canceled, but, again, I'm sure that it's hard to maybe make the calls, or they just figure they got it and not worry about it. The other suggestion statewide, because we're, we're listening to what other people in other counties are doing, is to do the same thing that you do in, in an office, is at, at some point, you have a no-show rate that sits somewhere around 30%, and so you overbook. So, that's possible, that we begin to do something like that.
Kind of like the airlines.
And that works pretty good, because, you know, we, we, we can, we have the vaccine and, and we're able to do that. So, that might be two approaches. I don't know what...
We're actually not seeing no-shows. We have such a very small, I mean, maybe one or two people throughout this experience have not shown up, but, because we are not booking them that far out.
Right.
So, we're a couple of days ahead, and so we do have the ongoing communication where they get 72-hour notice, 48-hour notice, 24-hour notice. But, we're not seeing people not show up, because, again, it's, it's a very small window between when they are alerted to when the appointment is.
Well, maybe our local newspaper and our local TV stations can say, if you have gotten your vaccine and you were awaiting an appointment, please cancel. Looking at the numbers also, and I know we're talking about South End, a South End location, a, the fairgrounds, and then maybe a North End location. I would encourage a North End location, because when you pull up the average age in the North End of the county, and North End, I would include the North, the North End of Palm Beach. Palm Beach is 70. Palm Beach Gardens is 51. Dequesta's 52. North Palm Beach is 56. Palm Beach Doors is 58. So, I would actually encourage you to really think about getting a North End site up and going. And I know we're talking about equity, but, you know, we have an older population in the North End of the county, and I'd like to see some attention paid to them. Also...
We are working on that, Commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Also, you know, talking about the numbers, last week, we're at about 25% of our population that could be vaccinated have received a vaccine. And, listening to your numbers today, we're at about 33%. So, you are making headway. And I would like to, I would like people to actually realize, we are making headway. I mean, when you pull up the CDC numbers, California per capita has done 7.2 people, 7.2%. Texas per capita has done 6.9%. Florida has done 7.8%. And as Dr. Alonso said earlier, we here in Palm Beach County have done 10%. You know, so, I know, the, the people that are getting the vaccines are not the ones that are calling us to say thank you. It's the people that have not gotten their vaccines yet. So, I just want to remind everyone out there, you're doing, you're doing the job you, you are tasked to do with all the tools you have, and every state is doing about the same job. So, I mean, unless you, unless you look at Connecticut, which is at 10% per capita, but then again, they've only received 449 doses, 449,000 doses. But, I just want to remind everybody that we are, we are paying attention. You are making phone calls. A reminder, please, those who are without computers, how are they getting contacted?
So, we're not actually contacting those folks yet. The people that we're working from that list still have, they have the email, because they sent the email to begin with. So, but, as we're preparing to wean ourselves off of this waiting list, we're preparing in the background a helpline so that we can work with those people that have phone only, and will need to call us to get themselves into our virtual waiting room and get on that list. So, it's not a fast track, it's not a fast track, it's a helpline to get them in the waiting room.
Now, last question. People who have a second appointment, are they leaving their first appointment with a location? Because I know I've, I've gotten some emails of people that said, I did, I left, I have a date, I don't have a location, which I don't know how that happened, but I'm, I'm putting it out there.
We are giving the date and the location. We're at the Lake Worth Road location, our Health Department is the senior center, Midtown Senior Center out on Lake Worth Road. We've been giving that. Unfortunately, some of the emails that generate that appointment, there's a little glitch on, on a certain timeframe that still says 800 Klamatis. So, we're having to make sure that those people, make sure that they go to Lake Worth. So far, we haven't had any problem, and we've been able to get everybody to the right place, and nobody has gotten lost.
So, to reiterate, you, you are calling people who have a schedule for their first doses. You're doing the same for people who have their second dose scheduled? Okay. I think I've covered all my questions. Thank you very much.
Very good. We'll go to Commissioner McKinley, and then to Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Davis, I think it's cold enough in here. If you need a backup storage site for vaccines, you might be able to put them in here. I, I want to, first, I want to start off with a comment. Dr. Alonso, I, I know you half jokingly said this, that if you got your vaccine in Okeechobee County, to go back to Okeechobee County, correct? I would ask, how many vaccines are we expecting this week between Publix and the Healthcare District and the Health Department and everybody else?
We've got, you mean, a coming week?
Right. Our next, our next shipment.
This week, we got 9,000 between you and us.
Okay. Okeechobee County got 500. This is a problem. There was a News Service of Florida article that came out yesterday that highlights this, this problem in our rural counties. Okeechobee County has one Publix. They are not part of the system. So, the Health Department in Okeechobee County is the only agency that's receiving vaccines, 500. So, I, I know people are anxious to get the vaccines, but we're, I'm frustrated for parts of, of my district in terms of vaccinations, but our rural counties are really hurting. And, please, do not go to that website and sign up. You know, if you live in Palm Beach, Broward, or Miami-Dade County, we've got more opportunities than they do in the rural communities. So, I just wanted to respond to that comment. I know you didn't mean it, but I certainly...
Well, but...
I know that's the truth. If you got your first one, you're going to have to go back and get your second one there. And I, I'd like to see if the state can somehow change that, that requirement. And I'd like to see if the state can somehow change that requirement so that we're not taking away that access from our rural county residents. Then I would also, I understand, Dr. Alonso, that you're working off of the waitlist right now, and I appreciate that, but not giving people, your decision to not open up the state registration web portal is pushing our residents into other counties as they seek opportunity. I just feel that if we had that registration site open, we would be able to give people a sense of hope that their names are somewhere on a waitlist waiting for their vaccine. And I just disagree with your decision not to do that, and I would hope that you would reconsider that.
The site is open. Anybody who wants to go on there and wait can do it, and I'm sure we've got, that's why I wanted the state to give me the ability to look at that list and see how many, they have 1 million people on that waitlist right now. I want to know how many of those people belong to Palm Beach County. What I recommended and I stated in the press release was that for them to understand that this was a waitlist exactly like the waitlist that we had, and people are very, very frustrated with waitlists because they don't know whether or not the email was accepted, they don't know when it's going to be, and so you're going to keep getting the calls from them saying, where am I on the waitlist? And I will not be able to answer that to them.
I'm confused because you just said, for example, if my elderly relative registers on the Broward website, and then they register on the Miami-Dade website, and then they register on the Monroe website, the only one the state's going to recognize is the Monroe website, and they're going to bump them off of Miami-Dade and Broward. So they can go on a Palm Beach County? Because your email to me yesterday said you hadn't activated our portal yet.
I'm not the one that activated it. It's the state activated it statewide. There's 1 million people on there already.
Okay. But you made a decision to not participate. Can you just explain how this works?
Yes.
Thank you.
The statewide system is open, and anybody that wants to go on it can go on it. In Palm Beach County, we're not going to start calling those people for appointments because we still have the waitlists that we have. So if they go on that site for Palm Beach County, they're just going to have to wait until we get to them. So that's all it is, is a wait site. And then, once we get that, then we can start using it to do appointments for Palm Beach County through the Health Department, right? Because they're going to use their system to do their appointments.
Okay. Well, that's certainly not how it was portrayed publicly, and I think there's a lot of confusion, and hopefully we can straighten that out. The other concern I have is some of the confirmation emails, people have been sending me screenshots, whether it's Publix or whether it's something coming from the Healthcare District. I believe the Healthcare District says you must bring either a driver's license or a passport. And that is the only identification examples that are provided in that follow-up that a patient is getting. For people that don't have a driver's license or don't have a passport, I worry that that's going to give them the idea that they're not eligible because they don't have that photo ID. So is there a way that we can clear that up?
Yes, we need to change that. I mean, we are federally qualified health center, and in normal, non-COVID days, I mean, that's our patient population. We accept any type of residency, you know, lease agreement, things like that. In this case, with vaccines, I think it was inadvertently, you know, somebody put a driver's license, passport, just got to have a photo ID. It was done a little too quickly to try to get this going, and we need to change that. It hasn't been an issue so far, but it obviously has to be changed.
We have new literature and handouts and flyers that we're going to put, that we have up at our sites, and we've shared that with the Healthcare District. It includes, you can have a utility bill, you can have anything that shows that you're a resident in a location. So it spells out all the different kinds of identification that you can utilize.
That's great, once they get there, but I want to make sure that they get there. And if the only thing they're being told that they can bring is a driver's license or a passport, they're not getting there to see those signs. Is there, Mr. Johnson, is there a way you could pass that along to Publix as well?
We can talk.
Just a suggestion to them. And then, Dr. Alonso, last week, or the last time you appeared before us, I guess that was last week, speaking in Groundhog Day, it feels like Groundhog Year. You mentioned trying to pull zip code data. Now, if people are showing up and they're, you know, registering with their driver's license or, you know, an ID, I'm assuming that you're collecting that address. Are we any closer to pulling zip code data?
That can only be pulled by the state. I do not, that's in the Florida shots, and it has all the information that we put in, including the zip codes. So I asked the state for Palm Beach County's vaccinations by zip codes, and they said they're still working on it. I've asked several times since we spoke, and I'm still expecting to get that. I also recommended that they make it part of the dashboard so everybody can see it.
That information, so long as it doesn't contain identifying factors, that zip code data is public record, correct?
It's not public to the public, and it's not public to me, so it's being held by the state, and I have asked for that to be given to all of us. All the counties want it now. I mean, Miami Herald wrote that article, and everybody wants to see the same thing.
Okay. Well, maybe some members of the media could put in a public records request and expedite that data and make that happen for us, because I'd be very curious. I mean, when you watch, what was it, 71% white, 3% black, 4% Hispanic, I mean, that shows a great disparity, but I'd also like to see what the geographical disparity is to look, hope we can continue to get that information. Darcy, are the school nurses, were they considered frontline health personnel and they've received their vaccines?
Those that opted in, yes.
Okay. And if you are currently a frontline healthcare worker, a firefighter, paramedic, where can you go to get a vaccine if you haven't already received one?
Fire rescue has gotten all the vaccine for their, for all their staff and all the EMTs and paramedics. They all got their allotments, and they have vaccinated all the folks that are willing to get it. Not everyone is willing to get it. And we, if they need more vaccine for that, we'd be happy to give them our allocations to do that.
Okay. And how about if you're a healthcare worker and you've changed your mind and have decided that you now want to get a vaccine?
We're working constantly with healthcare workers. When we see our allotment, we're seeing both 65 and over as well as healthcare workers. We use the medical quality assurance website for all licensed physician, all licensed providers in Palm Beach County. We sent them emails multiple times to get them to answer us so that we can schedule them for appointments. Right now, we're working with hospice, and we're working with some DCF staff that are considered also in that line of work by the Department of Health to get them in.
Okay.
And so that's constantly being updated, and anytime when they decide that they want to come in, they can call us or they can email us, and we will be happy to vaccinate them.
Okay. So those emails that we receive in our offices from a nurse here and there and a hospice worker, we can just forward those emails to you?
Yes.
Okay.
We had already spoken to them. I think you guys get a lot of emails, and they send them to all of you. They're very busy sending emails.
Well, the only way we started this whole fiasco is with an email address, so I get why they're dependent on emails. So I think there's a lot of confusion about who's doing what. You know, the federal government is, you know, they receive the vaccines, they ship them out to the states. The governor through his agencies are determining allocations. They're shipping them to the Florida Department of Health's local offices, and that's you, Dr. Alonso. You're the state, you are not the county. I want to make that very clear. And so then you're deciding with the allocation that you receive, who gets those? And so the Healthcare District and Ms. Davis's entity is one of those recipients. Doctor, or doctor, I just promoted you, Bill. Bill, can you tell me exactly what the county is doing in this effort right now? Because we get a lot of emails blaming the county for this rollout, and we're not getting people vaccines, and I just think it would provide some clarity to the public to know exactly how you're assisting in these efforts.
We are supporting Dr. Alonso in the effort to get vaccines in arms. So we are working with her team side by side, and we have twice daily calls. We are working to help establish pod sites, general pod sites, as I said, the mass pod sites. So for example, the Fairground site is one of those sites. We are working to coordinate with the Healthcare District to help with staffing those sites. We are coordinating with the State Emergency Operations Center because they are, in fact, creating these special projects throughout the county, and we are working to make sure that those projects are focused on the areas that are, we're making sure that we can have that level of diversity and distribution throughout the county. We are working to make consistent messaging as well, so that we're, again, working with the Department of Health, the Healthcare District, again, and the county in making sure that we're all seeing the same page, we're all singing from the same sheet of music so that our messaging is consistent to the community. Am I missing anything, Incident Commander? So we are definitely supporting with resources, personnel, and doing what we can to, you know, follow the lead of the Department of Health.
Okay. So when those requests are made, you're assisting with the logistics and disseminating the information?
Correct. Yes.
I think it's important for the public to understand that that's our role. Our role is not receiving the vaccines or storing the vaccines. We're not in charge of the waitlist. We're not setting up those registration sites. But when the tents have to be put up and the cones out and the firefighter, paramedics there to help administer the vaccines, that's what we're doing. So more of a logistics. And then, so thank you for that clarification. And then in closing, Commissioner Weiss, Vice Mayor Weiss, you started this conversation. You know, last week was a long week. It was very frustrating to hear the governor's announcement that, at the time, Publix was going to be the sole provider of vaccines in Palm Beach County. And I want to be clear that it was never, for me, it was never an issue that Publix was a partner. My issue is that Publix was the only partner, which left out significant portions of our community, that lack of Publix. And if that trajectory had continued in other parts of the state, you know, I also wear that statewide hat, and I worried about the implications that would have to other communities that are similar to the Glades part of my district. I want to thank, I want to thank the media, for one, for helping push that message out and that concern out, you know, and highlighting that disparity. I also want to thank the Everglades Agricultural Area Farmers and who reached out to the Florida Farm Bureau, the Florida Fruit and Vegetable Association, and their counterparts in Tallahassee who helped carry that rural Florida message to the governor's office. I also want to thank Tammy Jackson Moore and my aide, Lisa Wilson, as well as the mayors of the Tri-Cities in the Glades, Mayor Wilson, Mayor Kyle's, and Mayor Bab, for also reaching out, carrying that message. We saw a swift response from the Florida Division of Emergency Management. I had a call with Jared Moskowitz ahead of the governor's announcement, letting him know that, hey, by the way, as you partner with Publix, there aren't any in the Glades. Then, of course, the next day learned that they were about to be the sole provider. So I had a follow-up call with him on Friday and was very excited about two of his announcements, the first one being he would reallocate 5,000 vaccines from Publix to the Florida Department of Health's office here in Palm Beach, who would then share them with the Healthcare District. That was wonderful news. The other wonderful news was 6,000 vaccines, an additional 6,000 vaccines coming to the county to set up, they call them pods, I call them one-time pop-ups, in areas of our county not currently being served. And I know that Commissioner Bernard and Senator Powell are working really hard on putting that together. So I don't want to sound or seem ungrateful. I'm very grateful that 11,000 vaccines are finding their way into Palm Beach County this week and that we have a commitment for 5,000 of those to continue after this week. It's frustrating to have done that much work and to be told that of 11,000 vaccines, 600 of them are going to the Glades, 500 for the one-time pop-up that will occur Friday from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Belgrade campus of Palm Beach State College. Appointment only, please don't show up. And then through the partnership with the Florida Department of Health and the Healthcare District of the 5,000 reallocated from Publix, I'm being told a commitment of 100 vaccines will be provided at the current operation at Lakeside. Those were the numbers that were given to me yesterday.
That's hers. It's not Lakeside, it's at our Health Department, and those are also by appointment only.
Right.
And if they have more appointments, we can give them more vaccine. It's, we want to fill whatever need is out there.
Yeah, well, when you say 100 are coming, you're going to have people that are discouraged, oh, there's only 100, I'm not even going to bother, after what they've experienced on Publix wait, you know, websites and the Health Department's original email list. It's just discouraging, and it was a lot of work from all of us up here to get the attention to Tallahassee, to get those vaccines allocated to our county, to have had my agricultural partners work so hard, and out of 11,600 are on their way to the Glades. Now, we'll work, we will work. It's a fighting spirit in that community, and we will work to increase the demand, to hopefully increase the supply. But I can't sit here and say that I'm not disappointed in those low numbers. That's all. Thank you.
If I can give you a little bit of encouragement along those lines, we are also looking for when we have more vaccine, that we expect that we would have some more large operations to take care of the agricultural community once those folks start showing up also. So we're taking some proactive steps to work with some volunteers, nursing programs out there, and other individuals who will be able to assist and create the workforce that we need to be able to do that when we go to a larger scale. And again, the appointments are being done right through the Health Department, the C.L. Brombeck Health Center, which is out on State Road 80. As you're coming into the Glades, that's the first building that you see to your left, and that's where the vaccinations are taking place.
I know, Dr. Alonso, and I appreciate it, but I think I'm the only commissioner up here who has one of her aides. who has one of her aides working full-time, knocking door to door, trying to generate interest. And it shouldn't have to be that hard, you know? And when you learn that the two current sites right now are the South County Administration Center and the Central County Senior Center, you know, I look to Commissioner Marino and, and, and in parts of my district, that's South County to us. And so, you know, there's, there's nothing north of Lake Worth Road right now.
There will be.
I know there will be, but the message that you send is, you know, it's frustrating to my constituents, not only in the Glades, but Wellington and the acreage and Royal Palm Beach. It just sends a message that has, you know, plagued this commission for years and that the South County is the powerhouse of this community, of this county. And there's a lot of other parts that feel left out. I've been hot, focused on the Glades because they are so remote and because they don't have Publix out there, um, that we desperately needed to make sure that we had another resource. But the areas north of Lake Worth Road, I think, are feeling a little left out too. I know you're doing the best you can, but I just wanted to express my frustration.
We will get there very soon.
Anything further, Commissioner McKinley? Very good. We'll move now to Commissioner Sacks and then back to Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Weiss. And then we'll hopefully close with Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick, a few quick follow-ups. Um, is there a phone number somebody can call to cancel their appointment?
Yes, we have an appointment hotline, um, that we utilize. Um, I don't have that with me right now to give it out. I don't have it memorized. Um, but they, they do call. People who decide to call do call us and cancel. We have some people that have canceled and said, I went to Publix and got it.
Okay, so can we get that information and you share that, you share that information with the healthcare district or?
Sure.
Okay. And, uh, then, um, what, what, uh, in these emails coming out from the healthcare district, what's the address people should be looking for? Does, because it doesn't come from the healthcare district in the email address, correct?
So it, well, it does have the logo on there and it, part of the confusion is that then we've been all over the place. So we kept taking the mobile unit. We're still taking the mobile unit. We've been to John Prince Park. Um, the, the address they should have is the address where their appointment will be.
No, the, the email address.
Oh. So that there's a landing page for them to request an appointment? Is that what you mean?
The one that invites them, the one that you send out to them to invite them to pick their appointment? What's the email? Where does it come from? Where does it?
Uh.
Freesia?
Yeah, Freesia is the vendor. Um.
Freesia-mail.
Yeah, I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'll have to go look. But it, you know, I, we've gotten questions. Is this legit? Is this from you? You know, things like that. The intent was, you know, that email is not typically what starts the process. People started bypassing the process by sharing the link. So what they should get is an email or a text from us, from the healthcare district with our name and our logo on it that directs them to that landing page where they make the request. And then they get an appointment confirmation email. So it, it, they're not supposed to be getting this Freesia, uh, link directly. It's because everybody's kind of cut the process and forwarded links and links and links. So, um.
So if they didn't, if they don't see that email, they should just go ahead and go to the link and sign up?
That, at this point, yeah. Go to the landing page and put your name out there. You know, I mean, it's just going, I mean, but we're inviting people to sit and wait. And I, you know, I, I wish that the individuals who have been reached by us directly would, um, go ahead and fill out that appointment request. We work through that process and then we can do a little more public communication once this is open to everybody, um, 65 and over that wasn't on the waiting list.
Okay, and then, uh, I think this, uh, my last question is going to be, I mean, realistically, people should be signing up. If they're not on the waitlist, they should be signing up on, on the state page then to get on a waitlist for after you finish this one up.
They can go right now and get on the state waitlist if that's what they want to do. Yes.
Yeah, so if they're not on, if they're not on the current waiting list that's being serviced, you know, over the next few weeks, they should get their place in line now. Wouldn't that make sense?
Well, I'm, I'm afraid that they will, um, be very frustrated because they're not going to hear for a long time, then they'll start calling. I mean, I don't like the idea of waitlists. I, I, I would much rather people start putting their names in at the time when we start doing the appointments. But if they want to be on the wait, as long as they know that it's just a waitlist, it's not the appointment system.
Correct. And, and then the last thing that I wanted to just follow up on is, um, in, because I, I also, you know, we talked about Publix a lot last week. And after hearing Commissioner McKinley, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, after hearing a lot of the frustrations from people trying to book appointments and some of the issues they were having to working with the public system, uh, I sent a letter, uh, to the CEO of Publix, Mr. Jones. And, um, within an hour or less than an hour, um, their office reached out and wanted to, to talk about, you know, how they might make their system better. And I appreciate that, um, you know, we'll, it's, we'll see, you know, to what extent they can change some of the things. But, you know, the fact of people having to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning and knowing that most of them are not going to get appointments, it was like, you know, we should be able to open it up at a later time during the day. So if, you know, it, it, it's, it's annoying as it is to have to get up extra early to try and get an appointment. But then when you sit there for two hours and don't get an appointment, it's really disappointing. And so at least do it at a time when people are normally up. So then they can just sit there and have coffee and watch their thing go and, and, uh, but there, there were some things, some suggestions, um, that came from constituents and, and members of this board that I was able to share with them. And, and I'm hopeful that they're going to implement some of these changes to make people's lives a little bit easier. And do appreciate the fact that, you know, they're, they are trying to do what they can uh, to help in this regard as well, getting people vaccinated because it, it's going to take a lot of people and a lot of different times. So thank you very much and thanks for being here today.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. We'll move now to Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, we don't give the supply. It's not up to us, federal government. But we are charged with the administration and the registration of the supply once we get it. That is the county. I'm a 65-year-old woman. I live in Palm Beach County. I'm a resident, American citizen. What do I do to get this vaccine? Dr. Alonso, I'm going to start with you. I'm going to go, I need one answer, one email address or one telephone number so that everybody here in this county knows, regardless of where they live, how do they get a vaccination? Who wants to answer?
I will, since it's my responsibility for the distribution, not yours as the commissioners. Um, I think everyone needs to recognize the help and the cooperation that this county has given to the health department in order to make this happen. And so I, I truly appreciate everything.
Please, Dr. Alonso, I, I, I will, I am very pleased with what you have done. Okay, but the, I just need one answer, one email address or one telephone number so that the 65-year-old Palm Beach County resident will know what to do from her county, which is us, to get a vaccination. And, and I'd like to hear from anybody here who can give us just a sentence, if you could, please.
The, the truth is that there is not one place where you can get that information.
So we do not have a one email address? Well, then how does a person get a vaccination? If they don't live in Century Village Boca or if they do not live in Kings Point, Delray, how does one get a vaccination?
Vaccination right now, you can either attempt to do it through Publix or.
So in other words, they would email Publix, number one, right? Number two, what would they do?
They get on the waitlist at the state site.
So they contact the, the Department of Health statewide, which is your department, Dr. Alonso. So one, Publix. Two, they do an email request at your place.
To the Share Care Site, which is not mine. It's statewide. The Share Care Site, which is on the, um, Florida Health.
Can you give us that email address right now?
I, I'm going to look it up while.
Fine, while you're looking that up and I'll, you know, I don't want to appreciate. Darcy, do you have any, I'm a 65-year-old woman living in Palm Beach County. I want the vaccine. Where, what do I do?
I think right now, if you want it immediately, it's.
No, no, I'm, I'm, look.
If you can wait.
Okay, until.
If you can wait, then the opportunities open up a lot faster. You can.
So in other words, I'll wait. Today's February 2nd, I believe? So I, let's say I wait two weeks, then what do I do?
I still think in two weeks, we're not a resource for you yet till we get through this list. So.
Forget, Bill, is there anything that you can help this resident of Palm Beach County get a vaccination?
The system is designed to, just like other retail sources. So for example, if you want to.
Not like Amazon.
I, I understand that.
I'm telling you right now, I can get Amazon on right now and I know I can order something and it'll probably be delivered tomorrow, not today.
Or not a vaccine.
But if you want to get, hypothetically, you want to get your oil change, you pick the site that you want in your neighborhood, the nearest site, and you make an appointment at that.
Public.
At that site, correct. So the idea is, the, the, the way the infrastructure is being built is so that when we do have enough vaccine, when we get into phase two, that we will have sites set up so that when you have, you can go to your nearest site, go to that website, make an appointment, just like OpenTable, like a restaurant. You want to go to a restaurant, you make that, that reservation, follow, you go, using OpenTable. Same kind of system. That's the way that the system is being built. Unfortunately, we simply just don't have enough vaccine. And so unfortunately, what's happened is, is that the state is, is, is doing more of a push as opposed to the, the poll system like you do with, with Amazon. So I wish there was an answer. There will never be a single one-stop place like Amazon. There's not a monopoly of, of, of vaccines. Um, we've seen that monopolies don't work, uh, in, in the vaccination world. Uh, so we've, again, as I've said, what we're doing is trying to create an infrastructure here so that there are multiple places and that ultimately, when there is enough vaccine, when we get to phase two, that you will be able to make an appointment with the site that is nearest your location or a, a location of your choosing.
So, and I'm going to come back to Dr. Alonso. Thank you, Dr. Alonso.
I have the, uh, the two sites that are available right now is myvaccine.f, as in Frank, l.gov. That's the state website to get on a waitlist. And the website for Publix is Publix.com/covidvaccine, all one word. So Publix.com/covidvaccine and myvaccine.fl.gov.
Excellent. Thank you so much because we, we are frustrated and I know you are all frustrated because our people are frustrated. So we really don't have a proper administrative registration system until we get more vaccines. Is that correct?
That's right.
Good. Thank you for that. And then when somebody, let's say somebody is lucky enough and they get a call back or an email back, what are the documents that they should bring when they go to get this shot in the arm? And any of you could answer.
If they don't have a driver's license?
No, no, they should, just tell me what they should bring.
Any identification that shows their address with their name.
Photo ID, photo ID that has a Palm, Palm Beach County address.
That would be helpful, but if they don't have that, they can have one of their utility bills uh, with their name and their address.
With a photo to show that they are, you know, John Doe, John Smith, and this is he. Is that, that would be for everybody, including Publix?
It's preferable but not required to have the photo ID.
Okay, so they don't have, but they have to have some proof of residency in Palm Beach County. Not necessarily citizenship, but at least.
Residency.
Now, Commissioner Weiss is telling me that it's just, you just have to have residency in the state of Florida?
Correct.
But not necessarily Palm Beach County? Is that correct?
Yes, because we, we can give the vaccine across county lines.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. So now, one, one last thing. We all received a letter, an email, from 211, which is offered to the healthcare district to provide a telephone number, 211, which is pretty easy. I thought. Um, for folks who do not have access either to the internet or are not able to use it, many of whom live in our district. Uh, can we, and I refer this to you, to the healthcare, can we review? And we've all received a letter. Can we review the use of 211 to help us get people registered who do not, who are not computer literate? Darcy, is that, because I think it was addressed to your.
Yeah, so we had initially, um, explored, and we've explored with several partners, 211, Area Council on Aging. How could we address some of the concerns with somebody who doesn't have internet access, doesn't have a computer? How do we address that? Ultimately, what we've decided is that we think it's more efficient for us to build that infrastructure in-house, create a phone, us, the healthcare district. Because in order to make that happen, you've got to train somebody on this system. How do you get somebody entered into that red, that appointment confirmation system? And then they have to have a constant touch point and it has to be by phone. So we felt like that that was something that we're, we're doing that now. That's what I mentioned earlier. We're building that infrastructure, knowing that as soon as we're done with this waitlist, that's when our link, our phone number, all of those things need to be more public because hopefully at that time, the vaccine is more available and we're filling more appointments and we're able to move more quickly through this, you know, virtual waiting room concept.
So I understand that as soon as, that you're building that, and if there's anything we can do to facilitate that for your agency, count us in. Because so many people cannot get.
Absolutely. And we have a call center, so don't get me wrong. We're not trying to build a call center. We have a call center, but we're building this unique function of vaccine appointments with additional employees. So it's not completely from scratch.
Just to end on a good note, I just want to say that, uh, Dr. Alonso, your agency uh, and the Strike Force and, um, also, uh, Lisa Manzione and Judy Millington have established this pod in these two big senior centers and they are now giving their second shots. And it's been beautifully done. It's really been, uh, pretty much seamless, as much as you can. And I think what you just said, Darcy, was interesting because they have, because to build that infrastructure, these big senior centers, and I just heard they're going to give it to Sun City and a Kings Point in central Florida, that have these existing, uh, pods, these existing infrastructures to give it, uh, to give the vaccines, uh, you know, a little bit easier and in an organized way. And I want to commend Commissioner McKinley in speaking out for her people in the district because next thing you know, she gets these calls. Hopefully we'll get enough vaccines out there to help the people in Commissioner McKinley's district because we are the people who are, you know, entrusted by our people to make sure that everybody gets its vaccine. Thanks for all you're doing and appreciate it as much as we can. Let's get the supply down and the administration will probably be a lot easier. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. And I'll just close with my comments. I don't, I don't think I have any questions. Um, usually by the time it gets to me, all the questions have been answered. And I do encourage my colleagues to, to interface and interact with every individual that, that is before us. They, whether it's on a daily basis or weekly basis, they are always accessible to us. And, um, you know, and Commissioner McKinley talked about with, with, with Mr. Johnson about what our respective roles are in this process between the Department of Health, the healthcare district, our EM, our Board of County Commissioners, the state DEM, the governor's office, the federal government. And, and I know that some of that was designed to, to shed some light on who's responsible for what. And the public needs to know that, but I want each and every one of you to know and I want the public to know that regardless of what our duties are individually or as an institution, that we are always on the same team and that we will always work in unison. And that has been the theme of our time in COVID-19 and it has been our theme as a union of government in Palm Beach County dating back to 1903, I think. I'd have to ask Commissioner Berger about that. I'll have to call her later and apologize.
She's, uh, she's watching. She, she's already texted me once.
I, I can't hear you. What's that?
I said Commissioner Berger texted earlier to congratulate Commissioner Sacks and I, so I know that she's watching.
I was just going to say she's probably watching.
Having said that, I want the public to know that there, whether times are tough or great, we're always going to be your best partners in this process and the public's best partners. And Commissioner McKinley, rightfully so, as Commissioner Sax just pointed out, made some very strong remarks last week, and those remarks were heard after the evidence was reviewed, which takes time for those data points to come out and filter their way to their public officials. But one of the duties that we didn't delineate specifically as a board is that it is our, our job, whether we have the vaccines or not, or we're sticking in the arms or not, as a Board of County Commissioners, we always have to represent our constituents. And, you know, I got a call from the Governor's Office following that meeting, and I had an opportunity to speak with the Governor on, on Friday evening, and he said, listen, message received, we, you know, Publix has been a great partner, and I stand by that, it's put an additional 67 points of access in this county, but, but the, the lack of equity was apparent and is apparent, and really not unexpected, unfortunately, in, in America in a lot of ways at this point, in terms of inequities in the healthcare system. And so, I thank Commissioner McKinley, because after you did that, and you did it with your due diligence, and you didn't, you know, you didn't do it just to throw bombs, you did it to fix a problem. And the Governor has said, hey, we're starting to change our plans in response to your request, we get it, we appreciate it, and that's happening. And Commissioner Weiss, I was sitting with Mr. Von Laren the other day, and he briefed me on the phone call that you had, or the inquiries that you made to Publix, and they got right back to you. And I'm never going to be a propagandist and stand up here and say, oh, everything's great, everything's perfect, but listen, COVID-19 has been a battle, that's why we, we chose combat COVID. This has not been an easy process, and, and it will continue to be a difficult process, because one of the things that we have to remember is that it's not a lack of competency on, on any part of any individual that this has been frustrating. At the end of the day, when you look at the logistical supply chain, if we knew we were going to have a million vaccines to run through, you know, July, we would have appointments given out, and everyone would be happy, and they would know, hey, I'm, I'm going to be taken care of, and they would have that safe space that they want, which is to, to know that they're going to be taken care of. But i- until that supply chain opens up, the only practical solution is to do it in a piecemeal fashion. That's not an excuse, it's a practical point that needs to be recognized. And so, on December 31st, when I sat with Mr. Johnson, and I sat with the Administrator at the EOC, and, and we started to see the, the difficulties in getting the vaccines through the supply chain, not just in Palm Beach County, but throughout this entire beautiful nation of ours, I said, we need to have a press conference on December 31st, and y'all joined me, and I appreciated that, because it was New Year's Eve. And my point in speaking to the public was, we need to manage expectations. And my humble request is that, as we continue to go through this, continue to advocate for what we need for our constituents, our constituents need to understand also that expectations need to be managed constantly. That is not an excuse, and that's not to shed any responsibility from your elected leaders, to those of you that are listening, or to the press that's going to report on this. But the more information you know, the easier it is to understand and manage those expectations. And I wanted to highlight some of the comments made by my colleague, Commissioner Moreno, in that, yeah, it has been tough, but let's also understand the success that we've made thus far. And I don't, I hate to look at the state of Florida and say that we're in competition with other counties, but the bottom line is, we were elected by the residents of this county, and we have a solemn oath and duty to advocate on their behalf. And, and I am proud of the fact that, per capita, we're number one in the state. I'm proud that our positivity rate remains below the state average. I'm proud that we've inoculated 10.7 of our population versus Florida, which is at 7.9, versus Dade, which is at 6.4, versus Broward, which is 7.4. That result is, is a reflection of the continued teamwork and commitment to what we're trying to accomplish collectively. Commissioner Sax ended on a good note, and I just wanted to insert that good note as well, that we, we look forward to remain, remaining partners, particularly with the Department of Health and the healthcare district. I had an opportunity to be out there with your folks as, as your nurses and fire rescue personnel were literally putting the injections into the arms and people were leaving, and saying, this was the best experience that I've ever had. I wish we could do that for everyone right away, but we're not going to be able to, and until that time, I know that we remain committed as a board to making sure that our needs and our expectations and our concerns are voiced in, in a manner that facilitates progress, and that's what's been happening on, on this board, and I'm proud of that. Vice Mayor Weinroth has handed me the Florida Health COVID 24-hour hotline to answer general questions, 866-779-6121, 866-779-6121. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And to, to our constituents, thank you for your patience, thank you for your diligence, thank you for your commitment to getting inoculated. We can't force anyone to do it, and certainly, we don't have the capacity to force anyone to do it right now, but to those that are stepping up and, and getting through this difficult process, it's a civic obligation, and I'm humbled by the response that this county's put forward. Having said that, it is time to move on, because there's special recognition, that's very important to me, and I'll save my comments for after. So, I'm going to turn it over now to, to our county administrator, Ms. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank our partners, and we are partners. I torture them early in the morning, late at night, along with the rest of my staff, and they're, they're still here. So, we are definitely partners and joined at the hip for the betterment of our community, and we will continue to work together and make sure that our residents are provided opportunities to receive our vaccinations. So, on that note, Mr. Johnson, Mr. William, Bill Johnson, our Director of Emergency Management, this is his last board meeting with us. He has earned and deserve retirement, just from the pandemic. I want to take a few moments to highlight some of his numerous contributions to Palm Beach County government and the residents of Palm Beach. Bill began his career with the county in April of 2010, when Vince Bonvento, Assistant County Administrator, I should say, the late Vince Bonvento, Assistant County Administrator and Director of, of Public Safety Department, borrowed him from Broward County Emergency Management. Bill hit the ground running when he got here, because he saw we kept it moving, and he helped to facilitate the Hurricane Marley full-scale countywide hurricane exercise just weeks on the job. In the decade to follow, Bill advanced the Division of Emergency Management, the Emergency Operations Center, and the Palm Beach County Warning Point into a world-class operation. He supervised the county's emergency medical services office, oversaw the EMS Advisory Council, the countywide EMS grant program, and also managed the 911 service program until it became its own division in 2013. During his tenure, Bill pursued, managed, closed out over $7 million in emergency management, homeland security, and EMS grants. His vision to transform our Emergency Operations Center into one of the most technological, advanced EOCs in the state, and people come in and they're just wowed with what we've got and how we operate in our EOC. Bill is the impetus behind that. During his employment with Emergency Management, he and his staff developed and regularly revised 12 hazardous specific plans, 11 incident support plans, five coordinating procedures. Under his leadership, the Division also received its first national accreditation from the Emergency Management Accreditation Program. Only 29 other county-level emergency management programs in the nation have achieved this level of excellence. The Division will be seeking re-accreditation next year. Bill has been through 16 full activations as our emergency director, and at least 55 partial activations at the EOC. Countless exercises to ensure we would be able to handle emergencies coming up. And he led us through the pandemic, one of the longest in history, and in addition to that, we had other emergencies that cropped up, hurricanes, floods, and so, we've just been juggling, and Bill has been just tremendous in helping lead us through this effort. He did receive, the, in 2016, the Chad Reed Emergency Manager of the Year Award at the Florida Emergency Preparedness Association Annual Meeting. This is the association's highest award, which he has definitely earned. I could go on and on, but I will stop at that point, so Bill's head can get out of the door without us re-renovating. So, again, please join me in thanking Bill for all his years of service and the tremendous work he's done. We'd also like to present you with a collage of pictures and different events that you have shared with us, and you've been our leader as our emergency director, and I just can't thank you enough. And not only did you do all the things that I highlighted and many more, but you also had a succession plan. And so, Mary Blakeney will be replacing Bill. She has been his assistant throughout this entire time, and she has a lot of experience, including leading the state's emergency managers as president for the state of Florida. So, we are still in good hands. Bill knows he's not going far, because we're going to call him when we need him, and he's going to volunteer, right? Okay, so I'd like to present you with this collage.
Do you want to take a picture?
Yeah.
They want congratulations.
You guys are going to make me cry.
Write it in here. I'll just let you answer from here. Actual email.
Final chapter.
I am smiling.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
I got all of them. And we're in this.
All right, I'm, I'm confident that members of our board want to say very nice things about Mr. Johnson, so we're going to start to my right with Commissioner McKinley. Your light is, is on, so I recognize you first, ma'am.
Thank you. I, you know, I started with the county in March of 2010, so I've been with you since almost the whole time. And I have to tell you that when Mr. Johnson first started, I remember thinking to myself, he's so quiet. He has such a soft-spoken voice, is, you know, it's kind of funny, it's what people used to say about me. And then I came to really appreciate, you know, during, having to sit in that Legislative Affairs Office from time to time when Todd wasn't available in those EOC briefings, and then being a Commissioner and standing, sitting in the briefing rooms with you and standing at the podium with you during activation, I came to really appreciate that calm voice that you provided, and you are recognized across the state. You know, before her promotion, my, before Mary's promotion today, my sister-in-law, Katie Eck, works in the Lee County Emergency Operations Center, she's Mary's equivalent over there, and she said, every county in the state of Florida wishes they had a Bill Johnson. And I'm sure I'm going to get a text from her later saying, no, 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 every county wishes they had a Mary Blakeney, which they, they do too, but every, everybody wishes they had a Bill Johnson. And when we're in Tallahassee, it's, leadership looks to you. I remember our former Legislative Affairs Director, Rebecca De La Rosa, I think it was Emergency Management Day, and she said, they don't want to do the press conference unless you can speak, and that's the kind of recognition that you have across our state, and you will, you will be missed. And I, I remember learning from you how to bite my tongue. I need to work on that. But during Hurricane Irma, when we found ourselves having to do that very last-minute evacuation of the Lake Okachobee region, not just our county, but all the other counties around the lake, and found ourselves on Friday night having to figure out how to mandatory evacuate over 60,000 people from that region, and I'm not sure you completely agreed with that decision, but you bit your tongue and you did what the Governor had ordered us to do, and I had a, I earned a, a great deal of respect from you for that, and I just, we're going to miss you. So, thank you for being a calm voice, not just over the last year, but over the last 11 years you've been here.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Bernard, you recognize her.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Bill, just want to thank you very much for your dedication to Palm Beach County, and we've worked on many hurricanes together, and it's been really an honor just working with you to make sure that our residents, you know, to restore, our residents, you know, sometimes when we're dealing with the hurricanes, and you've impacted many community leaders also, and I did receive the, a text message from FPL to thank you for your work on behalf of the residents of Palm Beach County and for your hard work at the EOC. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. We'll now move to Commissioner Weiss, and then to Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you. I just, I want to echo everything else that's been said, but also, I mean, that, that is your calm demeanor, of being able to take a situation that's, you know, very active and be able to put everything in perspective. I mean, that's, I mean, what an amazing skill you have, and, and we're going to miss you, and the people of Palm Beach County owe you a big debt of gratitude. I mean, literally, you have been responsible for saving hundreds, if not thousands, of people's lives by the work that you do, and that, you know, that's just an amazing accomplishment. So, just wish you all the very best, and, and enjoy your retirement, whatever adventures that brings you, but thank you for your service, the people of Palm Beach County.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss, and Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Bill, like everybody else up here, I admire you. I admire you that you have never come in here with a frown on your face, you're always able to smile, even in the face of great obstacles, 323 days together on this present emergency. You know, I think from my days in business, I know that there's two ways that you evaluate someone. One is to plan for the unexpected, which obviously you have, and the other is succession planning, which you obviously have. And so, I compliment you on both of those roles, and having, again, been able to help us through this pandemic, I don't know, you know, I'm sure Mary will do as well as you, if not better, since you have trained her and brought her up, but I thank you for everything you've done in your role, and again, have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. Commissioner McKinley.
Just one final comment, because I'm looking at the guy sitting behind you. Don't take retirement advice from John Van Arnhem.
And I, absolutely. Come on up. Mr. Radcliffe, you recognize, on behalf of the League of Cities of Palm Beach County, sir.
Yes, thank you. I know, I sit here for many, many hours, and I usually don't pipe in, but in this case, I think it's something that people don't really know, and there's 39 municipalities in Palm Beach County, we represent more than 50% of the population, and there's 67 counties in, in Florida, there's 16 regional leagues. Nobody comes even close to us. We have established an partnership, a partnership together, because of Bill Johnson and your county administrator. It's unparalleled. Tomorrow, we will have our 125th call, municipal call, we've gone over everything from the closing of beaches to testing, and we probably had 75 calls every day in a row, every day in a row, because it was necessary. 75 calls every day in a row, every day in a row, because it was necessary. And that was done because of the partnership that, that we developed with, like I said, the county administrator and Bill Johnson. And it's not fun for him, and I know he doesn't like it, but it's what's best for the county. And he works so hard and has put up with so much, because it's herding cats, and you know that. It's herding cats. But relative to the rest, rest of the state and the other regional leagues, there's nothing that's even close to us. No one has the partnership, and no one has established what we have done. That's why our numbers are the best in the state. So it's due to him, and thank you, Bill, and thank you for putting up with us.
Thank you, Mr. Radcliffe. Mr. Bernard, did you have any funny stories to share or anything relevant? No? We'll share those later then.
So I just want to close by saying, did I miss somebody? Well, I got to talk bad about Bill for a second, and then he can talk. So, you know, I've been blessed in many ways in my life. And one of the ways I was blessed, like Commissioner McKinley, is I worked as an employee of government prior to working as a principal or an elected official of government. And I served in a small police department. But one thing I learned real quick is those of us that work in government not in an elected position, we really didn't like when elected officials came around. I'm just going to be candid with you. You know, when you're in your workspace, whether it's the police department, Verdini knows what I'm talking about, emergency management department, whatever it was, you know, it's great to have the city council there and whatever, the mayor, but it's like awesome when they leave. And I, and I learned that very early on in the process, because it really can only be bad things when they, when they show up. And so, you know, enter COVID-19, and, you know, we don't, we, we give policy directives up here. We are not the executive branch, and, and that's by design and by our charter on separation of powers. And that gets a little bit blurred when we're in a state of emergency, because the mayor does go into the EOC for a hurricane or whatnot, and you have the EPG. And there's a level of policy direction and execution at that point that the elected official is, is involved in. And hurricanes come and go pretty quickly, and COVID-19 does not. And, you know, within a couple of days, I found myself essentially warehoused at the Emergency Operations Center. And I was blessed to do that, because I was welcomed with open arms. And I'll be candid, Mr. Johnson and I have had our disputes. We've had our, our very strong conversations. Now, I go from zero, I'm usually at a zero, but I can go from zero to 100 pretty quickly. Bill doesn't. And everyone has touched upon your demeanor, your professionalism, the way that you bring calm within the storm. It's something that I'm very envious of, of you, but I know that that's cultivated and built over years of experience. And I'll share one, one, and I wish that you could see that, that 1/10th of 1% of what Mr. Johnson and his team really does for this county, it's hard, because they're literally in an enclosed building without windows. But I got to see, and I continue to see, what goes on in that building, and the professionalism and leadership that he has brought, and the esprit de corps and camaraderie. There was a time early on in the process, and they all had their emergency management jackets on, and I'm like, hey, you know, I'm on the team, I want an emergency management jacket. He's, someone told me that, you know, we don't make those anymore. And of course, Bill, being ever attended, said, hey, you were asking about a jacket? I said, yeah, I'd love to have a jacket, you know, for the press conference, make me look official. And he's like, hold on. Comes back, he gives me the jacket, he's like, it's yours. I said, thanks, where'd you get it? He's like, it's mine. He literally will give you the shirt off his back when it comes down to it. And I think that's probably the best example that I can give about who he is at his core, regardless of being an emergency manager or a high-ranking official. And I'm probably not supposed to share this, because, you know, if you're working on substance, there's going to be disputes. And early on in the process, Bill and I found our groove together. But emergency manager Jared Moskowitz has told me, I'm not, probably not supposed to share this, and hopefully, I know Mary Lou's probably going to call me later, but hopefully Jared Moskowitz doesn't call me, but he told me that you're the best emergency manager in the state. And, and this was during a conversation where I don't think he was too happy with you at that point in time. But he said to me, you know, Jared and I are friends from the legislature. He said, Colonel, regardless, I got to tell you, you guys are lucky, you have the best, the best emergency manager in the state. And he didn't even say besides him, you know, he didn't even put him at the top. He said categorically. So I've formed a special relationship, I think, as says David Bernhardt and the members of my staff, whether it's a COVID education compliance team, or just spending a year of our lives together in the same building, which is a very unique experience for an elected official. And I'm very thankful that my colleagues gave me the opportunity to do that. So I wish you and your better half the best of times in the future. I know that you'll always be our friends and be here to, to support us in any way that you can. And I know that if Ms. Blakeney's position required affirmation or affirmative vote from this board, she would get it. I don't think it does by charter. I think that's the right of the department, had to choose your successor. But you've done well in choosing the successor, and you've knocked that out of the ball. When you look back on your professional life and your professional book of work, you have a lot to be proud of, sir. Thank you.
You're making me cry.
You're allowed to.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Over the past few weeks and the days coming, I'll be experiencing a lot of laughs, and that gives me lots of mixed emotions. While I'm excited to build a new experience in life, hopefully a little more relaxing, and it's a new chapter in my life, I'm really going to miss my Palm Beach County family. And I use that term very, very seriously. I will truly miss all of the friendships that I've established over the decade-plus. I've worked with many people throughout my career who are truly public servants, and many of them are all in this room. And many people like myself who consider this more than just a job. I've worked in the public sector for, in four different jurisdictions for more than 25 years. And the best of everything, as we, is our tagline, is no truer than here in Palm Beach County. Our Palm Beach County family works harder to make the difference in the lives of our residents nowhere different, no more than anywhere else. And I see this demonstrated every day. And I think we've just spent the last couple of hours demonstrating just one example of that. And I think there's this picture of, I'm going to get, I'm going to get even. But I think there are a lot of examples that I could spend hours going over, and speaking of which, I could go hours personally thanking all of the people that, in the Palm Beach County family, that have made a significant impact on my life and my work here. But if I can, just make, just take a few moments to thank a few. And first of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you, because you all have been terrific leaders. You've been responsive. My peers across the state are envious about the direction, the policy direction, the clarity, and the relationship that we have. They, they truly are envious of that. And just yesterday, I heard that, you know, that we've got it together, and they weren't just talking, my staff, I mean, I have a great, great world-class staff, but they're talking about us here in Palm Beach County, and including my leadership. Ms. Baker, I'm going to miss you. Your leadership, your passion, your compassion, your wisdom, you've been an inspiration to Mr. Van Arnhem, I won't take lessons from you, but, especially the, the retirement lessons, but your, your meticulous leadership, sir, has been inspirational as well. Your, the entire Assistant County Administration team have all been, who all play a very active role in the EOC, have been just terrific. I am blessed, and Mary will be blessed. Again, my peers across the state and across the nation are envious. Stephanie Shanahaw, my department director and my mentor, thank you. The late Vince Von Mento, thank you for bringing me to this family, welcoming into me this family, being a mentor, a great mentor of mine as a public servant. He was, after his 44 years of service, he was none better. Mary Blakeney, I can't even look at her right now. I wish you all the best. She has been my rock. She has been that leveling, balancing act, that, that person, everybody does need a Mary Blakeney. That person that you can always turn to, that, that you can lean on, that, that will push back, help support you. That person that will tell you, are you nuts? And that will bring me back onto the tracks. You have been terrific, Mary. I wish you your own very Mary Blakeney. And the countless department directors, division directors, and the dedicated, the thousands of dedicated staff that I've worked with, that work hard every day, making a difference in the lives of all of our residents. And not to mention the hundreds of different stakeholders, partners, FPNL, United Way, America Red Cross. I know I'll miss a lot of them, but just the state, federal, nonprofit entities that we have worked with throughout the years. My staff, I have a world-class staff that have true, true support for me, lifted me up, supported me, laughed with me, taken the bruises with me, that have been just a privilege to work with. It's truly been an honor and a privilege to work with each and every one of you. I wish my entire Palm Beach County family the absolute very best. Be well. Thank you.
Mary, did you have any comments that you wanted to make? No, you're good, all right. It's at this, at this moment that people really enjoy wearing masks, I think, when the emotions come.
All right. I assume, as, as always, the board would like to continue on to the regular agenda prior to matters by the public. We'll move now to Agenda Item Number 5A1, Public Safety, related to a COPCN. We do have public comment, and I'll ask Stephanie to make present, brief presentation.
Do you want me up there, or? Up there?
Yeah, Darcy, if you don't mind, just stay, just in case we have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie Shanahaw, Director of Public Safety for the record. So we're here today. With me is John Van Arnhem, Deputy County Administrator, Mary Blakeney, the new Division of Emergency Management Director, you need tissues, Darcy Davis, CEO of Healthcare District and of Palm Beach County, and Denise Kaufman, Deputy County Attorney. So we'll go ahead and get started. The item before you today is to request approval to advertise for public hearing on February 9th for a revision to the Emergency Medical Services Ordinance. We received a proposal from the Healthcare District to develop their own hospital-based emergency medical system and apply for a secondary service provider COPCN to provide inter-facility transports of patients, which would be limited to patients needing transports from Lakeside Medical Center, a public hospital, and Belglade, to other healthcare district facilities, specialized treatment centers, and hospitals, as well as patients needing transports to and from the JFK North Addiction Stabilization Unit operated in partnership with Palm Beach County. Based on this proposal that we received from the Healthcare District, functioning as a hospital-based EMS provider affords them many advantages to the hospital beyond the transport requirements. The primary advantage is onsite location of the transport unit, thereby eliminating the wait time for a unit to arrive from a remote location. The EMS staff can then rotate as part of the hospital team and will lead to improved teamwork and clinical education. This is just a list of the healthcare district facilities in Palm Beach County, and they are an independent taxing district, providing health services at CL Brumbach Primary Clinics, Edward J. Healy Rehabilitation and Nursing Center, Lakeside Medical Center Hospital, several mobile clinics, and again, like I mentioned, the JFK North Addiction Stabilization Unit. Currently, the EMS ordinance restricts governmental entities from providing inter-facility transfer services, which are termed secondary services. The amendment that we're requesting today to the Emergency Medical Services Ordinance would allow a governmental agency operating a public hospital to provide limited inter-facility transfer services with conditions when such hospital has obtained a COPCN from the county and licensed from the state. Following approval of this amendment would then allow the healthcare district to be eligible to apply for a secondary COPCN. Just some background information, the Emergency Medical Services Ordinance provides standards for issuing COPCNs in accordance with the Florida statute, Chapter 401, titled Medical Telecommunication and Transportation Services. A COPCN is a certificate that's issued to an emergency medical service provider, deeming it to be in the public convenience and necessity to operate within Palm Beach County. So there are three COPCNs that are issued in Palm Beach County, a primary, a secondary, and a special secondary. So this change is applicable to the secondary COPCN, which is a holder that provides secondary ALS transport and BLS inter-facility transfer services. The type of emergency medical service the healthcare district would like to provide for their patients falls under the county's secondary service provider category. These types of COPCNs are issued every six years and expire this June of 2021. The application period for secondary service providers is coming up in the next few months. If the amendment to this Emergency Medical Services Ordinance is approved by the Board of County Commissioners, which the approval will happen next Tuesday, February 9th, this will allow the healthcare district to apply for a secondary service provider COPCN, and the application for this COPCN would still return to the Board of County Commissioners for review and approval this June of 2021. So this is just a timeline that I wanted to highlight. Today is the first reading and advertise for public hearing. Next Tuesday will be the public hearing to adopt the EMS ordinance. And then on June 8th of 2021 is requesting approval of the secondary COPCN applications. So on December 17th, 2020, the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council to the Board of County Commissioners reviewed and unanimously recommended approval of the proposed EMS ordinance revisions. On January 20th, 2021, the League of Cities recommended approval as well. A few points that I just wanted to highlight in closing, there will be no impact on the mileage rate for the healthcare district. In anticipation of the proposed amendment to allow the healthcare district to apply for a secondary COPCN, the healthcare district budgeted funds to support this initiative. Also, a cost analysis was done, and there are increased savings and efficiencies by eliminating outsourced ambulance transport costs and decreasing the time their patients wait for transports. So in closing, staff is recommending approval to advertise for public hearing next Tuesday, February 9th. That's all I have. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Very good. I don't see any questions. I just wanted to clarify that after the second reading and approval of the ordinance, there's an application process. Is the application process ministerial in nature? Does the board retain its right to either accept or reject the application?
Does the, I didn't hear the last part of that.
Does the board retain the right to either accept or reject the application?
Correct, you do. We would review the applications that are submitted to the county. They go through the EMS council, and then the council would make recommendation, and the board has the opportunity to accept or deny.
Very good. Commissioner Bernard, you recognize for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have one comment card that's going to be by Mr. Brooke Little.
Mr. Little, it's a pleasure to see you, and let me say thank you to AMR specifically for all the help and support that you provided this county, employees have provided, and throughout the state of Florida during COVID-19. Y'all have been awesome, and you've always had our back, and we deeply appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to stop in today and provide AMR's public support, excuse me, public support for this ordinance amendment. We feel that it makes sense, we support it, we'll work closely with We'll work closely with staff, with the Healthcare District, to assist them in any way that we possibly can.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner McKinley, you recognizing comments?
Thank you, Mayor Kerner. Brooke, I want to thank you for being here today and providing that voice of support. Certainly eases a couple of concerns, so I appreciate that. But also, I want to join the mayor in thanking you for sticking around in Palm Beach County and providing assistance during this pandemic. But also, with the statewide hat that I wear, some of the best operations, vaccine operations that are going on in the state right now are being run through your parent company, Global Medical Response. And so just wanted to recognize that your entire company has been a leader in this effort. We just really appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to approve on preliminary reading and to advertise for public hearing on February 9th, 2021, at 9:30 a.m.
Vice Mayor Weinroth has moved 5A1 forward, seconded by Commissioner Moreno. There's no further comment by members of the board of the public. All in favor, all opposed. 5A1 passes seven to zero. We'll move now to ERM V1, 5V1, which is related to a deed of conservation easement for Pon Cypress Natural Area. Would any commissioner like a presentation on this? Commissioner McKinley? Nope, all right. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the amendment.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner McKinley on 5V1. No further comment, all in favor, all opposed. 5V1 passes six to one with Commissioner Weiss dissenting. We'll move now to 6A, Commission District Appointments. We'll start in numerical order with Commission District 1.
Thank you. I would like to request board approval to appoint Linda Kester to the Library Advisory Board.
Second. Motion to appoint Linda Kester to the Library Board made by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. Commissioner Weiss, you recognize, sir. Oh, is that from before? I apologize. Did you want to make any comments related to the prior? Very good. All right, the motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. No, by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed. That appointment passes seven to zero. Any further appointments, ma'am?
That's it.
Commission District 2.
No appointments.
Commission District 3, I have none. Vice Mayor Weinroth.
None, thank you.
Commissioner Sacks.
I do. This is, mayor and members of the board, we have a signed proclamation by all of us here to commemorate, a proclamation commemorating the 50 years of 211. And what 211 has done for the past 50 years.
Just, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sacks. We're just going to confine this to Commission District Appointments. I should have had to take my mask off to speak clearly, but do you mind if we take that up in Commissioner comments?
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you, ma'am. Did you have any Commission District appointments? Very good. We'll move now to District 6, Commissioner McKinley.
No appointments.
And then Commission District 7, Commissioner Bernard.
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And I don't have any Commission District appointments, but I do through my sitting as the Chair of the Board and County Mayor, the ability to appoint, directly appoint doesn't require ratification, but directly appoint Commissioner MacBernard to the Commission on Affordable Housing.
Second.
Unless you object to it. Very good. And that appointment passes by matter of law, so there's no vote needed. And we'll move deeper into the agenda. Staff comments. You guys want to do staff, do you want to do Commissioner comments now or after matters by the public? No, very good. We're going to do staff comments, start with 7A1. Commissioner, or Madam Administrator, you recognize.
I'll be extremely brief. You have an update of our board directives, so I'd like for you to approve and file them. I do want to point out that we're continuing to move forward with your directions regarding the Black Elected Officials Caucus request that we hold a community forum on policing. We have completed a couple. The latest one was out in the Glades last Wednesday evening. Commissioner McKinley joined us for that particular one in her district. I thought it went, it went very well. We're also moving forward with the Mobility Summit, Transportation Mobility Summit, which was also held on January 14th. It was virtual. We're, we will be working with our consultant, analyzing the input, and then bringing it back for a scheduled workshop with the board in the future. Those are the.
Very good. And we'll receive and follow your report without a motion necessary. So we'll receive and follow that objection. Any further comments, Madam Administrator?
No, sir.
Very good. County Attorney's Office, you recognize, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I was glad to be back here. Even though watching the board meetings in my pajamas isn't so bad, I still would rather prefer to be sitting here with you, so thank you for the nice welcome back.
Very good. And I know since you've been watching and staying in touch with each member of the board, we had some very laudatory and positive comments related to the ski park. I guess it's not a ski park any longer, but we appreciate the great work. Were you here when we made these comments? Or I think we had, it was a zoning meeting. So thank you very much for your leadership on that very important issue, and of course, all the other issues. I know that the appellate court upheld our mask ordinance, or the mask executive order. So the County Attorney's Office stalwart partner in everything that we do, and we appreciate your leadership, ma'am. That concludes staff comments. We'll now get into Commissioner comments and start with District 1, Commissioner Moreno.
I think we've all said an awful lot today, so I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commission District 2, Commissioner Weiss.
No comments, sir.
Commission District 5, Commissioner Sacks.
Now I can talk about 211.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyways, this is I'd like to commemorate, the proclamation that was signed by all of us here in the Board of County Commissioners in honor of 211. So that the proclamation states that from February 11th to February 17th, 2021, we are honoring the work of 211. 211 has been around for 50 years, and it has handled 3 million requests for help. And this is an organization I've been aware of for many years, and it is an excellent organization, and I just want to thank the voluntary Board of Directors of 211 for all the work they have done, the lives they have saved, and the people whom they have counseled. So on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners and you as mayor, we have a proclamation that...
That's an awesome proclamation, and thank you very much for advocating for 211. There's a motion been made by Commissioner Sacks and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. No further comments, all in favor, all opposed. That offsite proclamation passes seven to zero. Any further comments, Commissioner Sacks?
Just good to have Denise Marie back with us.
Heck, yes. District 6, Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you. I'll talk fast. During my remarks earlier after Michelle Demone's presentation, there were two things I forgot to mention in terms of being grateful and thanking them. The first one would be the Junior League. The Junior League has a motto, I like to call it PDI, P for promoting volunteerism, D for developing the potential of women, and I for improving the community. I take that D part very seriously, and developing the potential of women, they certainly help develop my potential, and I try to pay that forward. And the other two folks I forgot to recognize is that even though they are certainly not perfect, and I think that that's been highlighted in public forums before, but my daughters, Macy and Annika, everything I do is for them and for their future, as well as my son Brady, in hopes that he's learned how to respect and treat women and look to them for leadership. I also want to announce that on Thursday, there will be a ribbon cutting on the transitional housing facility in Pahokee. If you are able to attend, that would be wonderful, but if not, just be thinking of us as we cut that ribbon. And two more things, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weinroth, I would certainly support your earlier comments on trying to ask staff to work with our partners in developing some sort of pod for teachers over the age of 65. I think we're up to about a dozen counties across the state of Florida have managed to do that. I think we should try to do that as well. And in closing, I really want to thank Jared Moskowitz. He is, his experience has really played well in this pandemic, coming from a background of working for one of the largest disaster response companies in the nation, and being a legislator, and being the legislator who had to survive during that time of the Parkland shooting. He's been great. He's just so open and transparent, and he called and he said, hey, look, it was, it was an oversight. We didn't mean any disrespect, just trying to push out as much information and get as many partners as we can, and, you know, just lost sight of the fact that the Glades area didn't have a Publix. So sorry about that, we're going to fix it. And in this day and age of public service and public servants, getting the hammer to them a lot in the media, it takes a lot for somebody to be honest like that and just say, hey, we screwed up, sorry about that, and then turn around and fix it immediately. So I appreciate him. He is also giving the Legislative Executive Committee of the Florida Association of Counties an audience this week to be able to hear from county counterparts and other parts of the state on what some of the frustrations are, what's working, what's not working. And I know that he'll be committed to fixing those hiccups, so just wanted to thank him publicly.
Very good. Thank you for those comments, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Bernard, District 7, you recognize, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As we begin a month-long celebration of Black history, a time set aside to recognize the contributions of Black people to this nation and to the world, allow me a moment to salute the courage and accomplishments of those giants on whose shoulders I stand today. I am talking about Dr. Carter Woodson, who in 1926 launched the idea of a one-week celebration of African-American achievements. Here are our revels, first African-American senator, PBS pinchback, first African-American to serve as a state governor, Louisiana, Eva Mack, who was the first African-American commissioner of the city of West Palm Beach, and never to forget, former County Commissioner Maude Ford Lee, who was the first Palm Beach County Black Commissioner. These are just a few of those whose trailblazers careers have made it possible for me to serve here, to be part of this great body. But as we celebrate Black History Month, we should not forget the disproportionate impact that the COVID-19 pandemic is having on the Black community throughout Palm Beach County, throughout the state of Florida, and throughout the United States. We have to work even harder to make our country more just, a place where everyone's contribution is recognized and valued, and American history is truly inclusive of all the people that compose this great tapestry that is our country. And finally, Mr. Mayor, it is with deep sadness that I announce the passing of my chief of staff's mother, Anissa Mannum. Our condolences to Wilnita Mannum and her family during this difficult time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Bernard, and not to move past Black History Month out of disrespect, but just my sincere condolences to Wilnita and her family on a very tragic passing. No further comments, sir? All right, County Vice Mayor Weinroth, you recognize, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Two pieces of business to get out of the way first, a request for an offsite proclamation declaring March 21st to be signature gives back Spring Unity Day in Palm Beach County, and a request for an offsite certificate of appreciation for Wayne Barton.
Very good. Motion made by Vice Mayor Weinroth for offsite proclamation, seconded by Commissioner Weiss, all in favor, all opposed. That passes seven to zero.
On a lighter note, Groundhog Day, you know, usually we get to talk about how beautiful it is down here, and we're sitting here shivering today. I see a couple of coats and sweaters on, but we shiver when it's 60 degrees, and I'm sure our friends up north wish they had these, this weather. This would be called spring. But, you know, I think that we're enjoying our Groundhog Day, and even if there is going to be a longer winter, we can tolerate it down here. As Commissioner McKinley alluded, I'd like to turn our attention to the teachers as a targeted population, and I would like to, if at all possible, to see if we can't do something for all the teachers, but specifically if that's not permissible, at least to have a targeted pod for the teachers who are 65 and over, so that they can have immediate access to the vaccinations. And again, you know, my feeling is that our students are really deserving of an in-person education, and a lot of these, you know, educational professionals need to have the vaccination so they feel that they can go back to work. So I'm going to move that this body approve the targeted vaccination of our teacher population, at least those who are 65 and over.
Very good. Is there, there's a motion made by Vice Mayor Weinroth that this board take a public policy that we would like to set up a pod for 65-plus-old members of the school district or teachers only?
I'm going to say.
I have some numbers for you, too.
Okay, if you could, yeah.
Yeah, or so the board can make an informed decision. We have, or we have enough. The school district has 1,145 employees over the age of 65 or older, and there are 479 teachers within that that are 65 and older, and obviously, some of them will have been vaccinated already and some won't opt in, so I would estimate, and this is totally inappropriate, but it's probably going to be 600 to 700 is what it would take.
Madam Administrator, would you see a problem with the all 1,145 being allowed to participate in this pod?
I think if they're 65 years and older, they're more than welcome to participate. I also encourage my employees to apply if they haven't already, if they're 65 years and older. I think as long as we stick with the 65 were good and older.
Okay, so then we'll say all school district employees, 65 and over, would be entitled?
All right, that motion's been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. I don't see any further public or comment by members of the board. Commissioner Bernard, you recognize, sir.
Ms. Baker, you mentioned your staff.
I encourage everyone that's 65 years and older to apply. When we start to open this, and this is the issue, we pick and choose. So what we want to do is definitely protect our seniors, whether they're with the school district, or they're with county or municipal governments, that if they're 65 years and older, we encourage them to sign up for the vaccine, if, you know, that meets their needs. Again, not everybody is going to sign up for whatever reason, and I do encourage people, if they have any questions, that they should contact their physician to also get some input from their physician.
Very good. So, and just so we're clear, we are endorsing the policy of setting up a pod, which is not in our jurisdiction or authority directly, but to direct our county administrator to help facilitate that if possible. Are there any other comments from members of the board before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? All right, that policy, motion passes seven to zero. Further comments, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two Marias here, and on the state level, there's two Jareds, and I wanted to, like the Commissioner McKinley, thank Commissioner, Director Moskowitz, and also Jared Rosenstein, because they have been tremendously responsive. It's amazing, you know, again, 67 counties, and they have been amazingly, they've made themselves available to us, and there have been several special asks of them, and they have been there for us on a continuing basis, and I think we need to, you know, again, acknowledge the support that we've gotten from the state. One last thing, I'd like to ask the county administrator, if you could just clarify exactly what's going on in the state fairgrounds. I know there's been some news reports over the last 24 hours about the establishment of a vaccination center. Can you explain exactly what's going to be going on there?
The fairground site is one, it will be our major vaccination centers. We've been talking about this. We entered into an agreement with the fairgrounds so that when we get the appropriate vaccine in, that will be... in, that will be the area that we will push the most doses through. We have identified South County as one vaccine location, again, South Florida Fair as the largest. North County, we're working on and finalizing it. We anticipate working with Palm Beach State College. And then an area, which is the health clinic, as well as Lakeside, out in the Glades. So we want those major areas, so that when vaccine is available, we're ready to push the button and keep it moving. Currently, the healthcare district has been operating, or is still operating, out of John Prince Park, which we're closing that down. We'll be moving into the South Florida Fair. We did inform the board a couple of weeks ago that our goal was to have the fairgrounds ready sometime in early February. So we're early February, and we're still, the last I heard last night was we were still waiting on the last specifics from the healthcare district on the actual layout, so we can drop electrical connections down. When that is done, and we're ready to move forward, we do anticipate it possibly being on Monday, May 8th. However, it is not open for people to come in. We are working down the healthcare list. It is not going to be open for the public to come in. We did, when you see it, it is very large. Staff has done an excellent job on, on getting it almost completed. It is large, but we built it with expansion in mind. We will not open it up fully until we get the appropriate drugs coming in. So that's where we are.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner, I mean, Madam Administrator. My teeth are chattering over here. Maybe we could throw another log on the fire before our 2 o'clock session.
I, I did send a request to have it warmed up in here.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Well, Matters by the Public have a history of being heated anyways, maybe that'll... All right, moving forward, my comments. Unfortunately, I'm going to ask everyone in the chamber to please stand, rise and stand in a moment of silence. When I was off the dais a couple of times earlier, I was with Sergeant Dooley from the Florida Highway Patrol, and Dave Bernhardt, who informed me that two, two law enforcement officers, two federal agents, special agents with the Federal Bureau, Bureau of Investigations passed away, and three others are injured, perhaps one fatally, we'll find out later. But two agents did die today executing a warrant in Sunrise in Broward County on a, on a suspected very dangerous child predator of sorts. I don't know the specifics. So if we could please rise and have a moment of silence. I thank you for that moment, and we thank them for their service, and we will be in recess until 2 o'clock. Thank you.
Suzanne, a couple of hours, and have a student come up in?
Two and a half weeks, I think.
Two and a half weeks.